Good evening and welcome to our ordinary meeting of council on the 27th of February 2023. Acknowledgement of country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges the Rarriri elders, past, present and Rarriri nation, the original custodians of the land on which Lithgow's communities reside. The council also extends our respects to our neighbouring nations. Declarations of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting has been webcast and that those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any person, council or employee and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause 14.1 of the Code of Meeting Practice. Are there any apologies tonight? Councillor Goodsell will be approximately five minutes late, so full attendance. Can I have somebody move that we accept councillor Goodsell will be five minutes late, but you will not be in apology? Thank you councillor Goodwin. Thank you councillor Bryce, all those in favour say aye. Thank you. Declarations of interest this evening, are there any declarations of interest this evening?
Got a pecuniary interest in 10.1, point 1, point 2.
Thank you councillor O'Connor.
I have a declaration as well.
Thank you councillor Marnie, what would that be?
In regard to item 10.1, point 2, point 2. Floodplain risk management study and plan. I'm the owner of a property that's impacted by flooding. I have indicated, I sit right out in the outer edge of the Lithgow catchment. I've indicated that I'm happy for my property to be considered for flood mitigation measures to protect downstream areas. Any decision made would obviously have to come back in front of council for a decision. So I'm just indicating that I-
Will you be leaving the chambers councillor Marnie or voting on it or?
I don't believe there's any pecuniary interest or benefit from it. In fact, I may in fact lose land that would be available to me.
Thank you councillor Marnie. The oath of a councillor. I swear that I will undertake the duties of the office of a councillor in the best interests of the people of Lithgow local government area and the Lithgow City Council and that I will faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, powers, authorities and discretion vested in me under the Local Government Act 1993 or any other act to the best of my ability and judgment. Confirmation of the minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on the 23rd of January. Could I have somebody please confirm those minutes are correct?
Have you to move?
Thank you councillor Coleman, having a second to thank you.
Happy to second-
Councillor Bryce, all those in favour say aye. Thank you. 6.6, commemorations and announcements. On behalf of the Lithgow City Council, as mayor, I express sincere sympathy and condolences to families who have lost loved ones since the last council meeting. I propose we stand for a moment to remember these people and respect that we have lost several wonderful citizens in our local government area. Thank you. Item 7-
Before we move forward mayor, I'd just like to acknowledge councillor McGee, who came third in the Sgong competition at Vidal Show, I believe. And I just wanted to congratulate him personally because the Vidal Show was just fantastic and I just wanted to acknowledge him for that.
Thank you councillor Coleman. Any person registered to speak during the public forum on matters included in the business paper and registered via the council website prior to 12 noon on the day of the meeting will have the opportunity to speak. There will only be two speakers for and against on each matter on the business paper. Public forum will be allocated half an hour and in total with each speaker having three minutes to speak. Public forum and registered people, sorry, speakers not registered for public forum will have the opportunity to speak on the matter if time permits. There is a merril minute, however, it's confidential. Oh, do public forum, yes. Can I have please Damien Robach now, Mr, the general manager's going to read out Damien Robach's submission, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Robach explained that he's going overseas this week, so he wasn't able to be here, but he provided a precis of the point that he would have made if here. So I'll just read that out and Mr. Robach says, I'm unable to attend the council meeting this week. My primary concern with the Bunnings proposal regards traffic flow. So he's referring to the development application that's in the business paper tonight. I can't see how it will operate safely with the extra traffic that will occur. As noted previously, we see what happens there now on a daily basis. It's already a dangerous intersection at the bottom of the road, will only become more so. If this could be noted at the meeting on my behalf, it would be appreciated. And mayor, I just want to acknowledge that on each councillor's desk, there is a memorandum which deals with that issue that Mr. Robach is making, but also the assessment report goes to some length to describe how the traffic impacts have been assessed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. General Manager. Tonight we have Martin Tyser's next, please, would you like to come to the microphone? Thank you.
Good evening mayor, councillors, fellow ratepayers and residents. So I would like to make comments tonight on the agenda item 1044 relating to councillors' 22, 23 quarter to budget review. And secondly, councillors' confirmation tonight of their minutes of their last council meeting, in particular to council resolution 2316 regarding an application to white part for a permanent special rate variation of 45.7% from the 1st of July this year that may decrease to 27.7% subject to the council successfully establishing new rating levies against business power generation mining and a new quarrying business rating category. The mayor and four other current councillors would be aware that in early 2017, the locally based Plymouth Brethren Christian Church group approached this council, quote, "looking for a suitable parcel of land for a school development." In short, the council and the church identified 17.43 hectares or 44 acres of council land owned, sorry, of council-owned vacant residential zone land adjacent to the five and a half hectare Wellerawang Public School, heading up in a northerly direction, up towards the Wang township and directly opposite and overlooking the Lake Wallace Dam. Without any public tender, the council and church subsequently directly negotiated the confidential sale of the land for just $1.1 million excluding GST. The council resolution for the sale of this publicly owned land was unanimously supported by all the then current councillors, five of which are still here tonight. After the council resolution, a senior church representative told the Lithgow Mercury that, quote, "it will be a very expensive and a very lengthy exercise" and that "any land not used to build the school grounds could be developed into homes subject to approval." In the same Lithgow Mercury media report, a senior council officer was quoted as saying, quote, "that the church's company made an offer and we had an independent market valuation undertaken of which the price that council resolved to offer at that meeting meets the market value." The current Plymouth Brethren Christian School at Mount Victoria website indicates that their combined upper mountain and Lithgow school enrolments in the last year consisted of 21 primary and 43 secondary students, a total of 64 students. To the current day and early December last year, the church's company submitted their development application to the Lithgow City Council, now titled DA 226/22, a, quote, "a Torrance subdivision of one lot into 57 lots at 19 Barton Avenue at Wellerawang." The church's DA statement of environmental effects dated the 4th of December 23 for the proposed subdivision was placed on public exhibition 10 days later by the Lithgow City Council on the 14th of December 22, seeking any written submissions for or against to be taken into consideration prior to the council's determination of the development application. Public exhibition submissions closed on the 18th of January 23. This public exhibition was undertaken between council meetings and over the council's two-week Christmas, New Year closure period.
I'll move an extension.
Have a second to thank you councillor Goodsell, all those in favour say aye. Thank you, continue councillor Tyser-
Thank you, thank you Mrs. Tyser. I've just got some questions now. Mayor and councillors, I would like to conclude by asking some questions of the council. Are the mayor and councillors aware that the statement of environmental effects for DA 226/22 involves a subdivision of the site into 55 large lot residential allotments and two public open space lots to be used for water management? That there is no school development referenced anywhere at all in the statement of environmental effects for DA 226/22? That based on previous current and future projected sales of large lot residential land across Wellerawang, particularly land located directly opposite and overlooking the Lake Wallace Dam, any approval of DA 226/22 may achieve a yield of up to or over $15 million? How is it possible for the previous five councillors who approved council resolution for the sale of this publicly owned council land at just $1.1 million in 2017 to now vote on DA 226/22 in 23? If council included, I'm asking the question, if council included or expressed any school development caveat in the final executed land contract between the council and the church's company? If so, what was it? If not, why not? Why ratepayers are unable to find any council resolution that authorises under section 377H of the Local Government Act either the mayor and or general manager under delegated authority or for the common seal to be affixed to the executed land contract between the council and the church? If not, who in fact has signed off on the original land contract between the council and the church's company? Why has any of this directly negotiated council public land sale at Wellerawang never been referenced in any Lithgow City Council annual reports to date? And finally, how can the Lithgow City Council seriously ask its many struggling ratepayers to suck it up and accept a new council imposed permanent variation, special rate variation increase of anywhere from 27.7 to 45.7% from the 1st of July this year? When this council has previously sold ratepayers' assets for just $1.1 million that just a few years later may achieve a yield of up to or over $15 million? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Tyser.
Those questions are there if he wants to hand them out to all the councillors. Are you able to provide answers to that?
The general manager would be happy to make a comment, thank you.
Yeah, I'm happy for him to have a look at that and then report back in the public forum, if that's your case.
We will take those questions on notice substantially. However, it is appropriate to put on the public record for those in the gallery and those viewing. I wasn't with the council at the time, but I've heard this matter raised since the development application was submitted. So quite forensically, I've looked at the circumstances. Mr. Tyser is correct, it was a decision of the council. The council took the decision to sell that land after consideration of all of the relevant matters. I can assure the gallery it was sold at market value. It was independently assessed and that was the value and wouldn't we all like to have a crystal ball to know how land is going to increase in value? But it was sold at market value and it was a decision of the council and all relevant matters were considered at that point in time. It was a practice of that day. It isn't a practice that this council would follow, but it was appropriate, it was legal and it was within the available decisions to council. But I want to say again that it was independently certified on behalf of council, not the proponent. It was independently valued, sorry, and council received the value.
I'd like to just add to that. I think it would be five weeks ago from memory, I asked the council solicitor, the general manager and the financial manager to have a complete review on that. It was while councillor Leslie was mayor, not me, which is what the rumour was going around. And I'm absolutely more than satisfied that this forensic report I received is true in fact. Sorry, we can't debate that now, thank you.
That's a question. Will council release that report?
It was a private report between me as mayor and the chief financial officer and the solicitor, thank you. Mr. Tim Wilkinson, thank you. Advocate to Sea Diver's developer of the proposed Bunnings.
Good evening, thanks for receiving me this evening. Just on the matter 10.1, point 1, point 3, point 1, which is for the Bunnings development, I represent Bunnings and obviously I'm here in favour of the development application being determined to be positive. As you know, Bunnings have been attempting to invest money in this town for a long time with various development opportunities, both on our existing site and ultimately in partnership with Sea Dives, who have been able to propose a standard built Bunnings, which is going to be a fantastic result for both the town and for the team and for the community. So we look forward to creating more jobs, a very safe site with the way the trafficking works with the truck being kept away from the cars and from the consumers. And we look forward to a positive determination on this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson, best wishes, thank you. Mr. Tom Evangelista? Evangelitis, I beg your pardon?
Hi guys, I'm here to talk about the incinerator. I've sat and listened to intelligent, considerate and caring people talk about their opposition to burning Sydney's rubbish in Lithgow. But it's just not sinking in, the few guys. I chose to call this project exactly what it is, burning Sydney's rubbish in Lithgow. That's not debatable. You guys can argue if it's toxic or not, the fact is, you want to burn Sydney's trash in Lithgow. Even when the APA ruled against the Wellerawang site, didn't any of the councillors think to themselves, huh, maybe I didn't do enough research, maybe I was wrong, should I change my vote? You guys can change your vote, you know, at any time. The mayor changed the vote, I encourage her, please change your vote. In the circular economy, I'm going to spell it out really clearly for you guys, because it's just not sinking in. In the circular economy, 20% of rate waste is deemed unrecyclable. That's exactly what they'll be burning. Red bin rubbish, all the crap people put in there, asbestos, rubbers, anything. It's the nastiest crap. That's what they're going to burn. All those nasties we buried in the past, right? We buried them, now they're going to burn them. You don't have any idea what's going to happen. I wasn't in their sales brochure, believe me, they're not going to tell you. Judging, do you want to trust these companies? Judging by their continual breaches and fines? You've got to be kidding me. How dare you put our future in these people's hands? Why are these incinerators always in poorer areas? And when they do propose a rich area like Randwick, Randwick council cover their garbage trucks with banners, no incinerator, banners in the street, no incinerator. Don't we deserve the same dedication to our health and family? Our council is the only council that voted, yes, we want Sydney's trash. We're pretty lucky, huh? Every councillor, I mean, do you guys want this to be your legacy? Everyone in this town is going to know and I'll make sure they know exactly who voted for it and who didn't vote for it. Why do you guys want it so bad? Don't say jobs, KFC employs more people than an incinerator. Don't say electricity. They produce 10 times less than solar for the same upfront cost. They create the same CO2 as landfill and worse for all, they pollute more than coal. These are facts, it's not my opinion, this is all fact. I don't care how broke you are, I pay my rates, go sell some property. You've already asked for a handout, what would Harry Seacam say about that? It's bloody embarrassing. It's not even up to you guys if this goes ahead.
Is there any councillor that wishes to-
Not even up to you guys.
Move an extension? Thank you councillor Coleman, a second to thank you.
The least you can do-
All those in favour say aye.
The least you can do is show the people of Lithgow that you actually give a damn about Lithgow. But this town will turn against you, I'm going to make sure of that. Good luck at the next election because everyone will know who voted for and voted against.
Stop, you're making a threat there, that's inappropriate.
Good luck at the, good luck at the next election is good luck at the next election. Well, I have to make a threat, I word it differently.
Mr. Rob White, thank you.
My name is Rob White. I'm here speaking on behalf of the Concerned Lithgow Community Inc. group. The topic is Mount Walker, but before addressing this, I would like to mention the term confirmation bias. I'm fully aware that probably most people in the room don't know what that is, so I'll explain it. Confirmation bias is the tendency for a person to process information by looking for or interpreting information that is consistent with their existing beliefs. Basically, what this means is that a person makes their mind up and they no longer listen to alternative points of view unless they support their existing point of view. As councillors and senior managers, you need to be careful that you don't exhibit confirmation bias when representing a community that voted you in. If you do, you have failed in the oath that Mayor Statham read out earlier on. The CLC group is aware that senior management and elected councillors receive updates from, of information from Energy Australia regarding the Lake Lisle pump hydro. We would expect nothing less than that. What you are probably not aware of is that the Concerned Lithgow Community Group also meets with Energy Australia. We are not satisfied with the sanitised marketing presentations that they often produce and we look to actively, proactively seek out the real truth of the matter of what's being delivered to Lithgow. In the past, Energy Australia has publicly displayed information that indicates the proposed Mount Walker reservoir just west of the city is around 40 metres high. And I have put on your benches information, which I will refer to during this, and for those of you behind me, you can see that too. And the first one that you will see, there is a concrete wall sitting next to the state office block and also the current building that we're in, the Lithgow council building. And that put at 40 metres the relative sizes of the two entities. And when we put that out some six months ago now, most people were quite aghast at how big the concrete wall was relative to what we had. But to us, this did not make sense. If you refer to page two of the document that's on your tables, our analysis showed that when we plotted on a contour map, the lowest point of the proposed reservoir, it was located at approximately the 1,000 metre contour mark. When we plotted the-
Happy to move it, extension.
Have you just second that?
Thank you councillor Marnie, all those in favour say aye. Thank you.
When we plotted the upper point, it was just below the 1,100 metre contour, which by default means that this wall would have to be approaching 100 metres tall. We presented this evidence along with the map that's on your file there to Energy Australia representatives and they confirmed to us that the maximum proposed height of the wall on Mount Walker is in fact approximately 85 metres. Not 40 metres, 85 metres. You can ask Energy Australia and they will confirm that for you too. The Sydney Opera House is only 65 metres high. So we've got something substantially bigger than the Opera House, but it's a concrete wall. So now we find Lithgow, Riddle, Hampton or anywhere else in the district will not be looking at 12 storeys of concrete wall, but will be looking at sections of concrete wall that are 25 storeys high. And I think people need to understand that's what we're getting. Add to this fact, the fact that the Mount Walker Ridge and the proposed reservoir is in the range of 550 to 600 metres long. The Sydney Harbour Bridge from pylon to pylon is 503 metres. So what's proposed for there is higher than the Opera House significantly and longer than the Harbour Bridge. If that's not enough, to top it off, the perimeter of the proposed site is approximately two kilometres. And if you want reference for that, you drive from where Main Street meets the Great Western Highway to the post office, that is approximately two kilometres. Lithgow council has been heavily promoting the Seven Valleys tourist concept, yet the most prominent feature in the entire Lithgow Valley, should this programme go ahead, would be a massive concrete wall sitting on the highest peak in the area. This does not make sense. This is just many of, one of the many truths that we have identified in the proposal. And the question that I put to councillors is, are you exhibiting confirmation bias by not listening to some of the messages that are coming out? Isn't it time that council management and councillors sat down with us to discuss what Lithgow is actually getting out of this pump hydro proposal? 85 metres.
Thank you, Mr. White. Mr. Ray Smith?
This is in reference to the JAD technical investigation report. Now, I assume that Energy Australia's finished this. So last Monday on the 20th of February, Energy Australia held a drop-in meeting to inform the public of the progress of the Lake Lisle hydro project. It was stated by Energy Australia that the results of the feasibility borehole study would remain confidential and not given to the public nor to Lithgow City Council. Questions must be asked with why Energy Australia would not release the drilling results of a DA approved by council for a local project. It lacks accountability and transparency, especially if the results may have come up with some abnormalities. Energy Australia was asked if all water and drilling liquids were accounted for during the drilling processes. After much discussion, Energy Australia admitted that water was lost, which also included the drilling liquids along with it. On the 9th of February this year, 2023, I was traversing along Farmers Creek, which is directly opposite the borehole areas, where it was noted that Farmers Creek had turned to a milky white colour. Being familiar with this type of discoloration, I assumed drilling liquids, compounds of muds, as they're known in the mining industry, accompanied with water will create such a situation. Possibly the drilling hit a water table, possibly creating an aquifer and emptying it into the creek. Energy Australia mentions the aquifer interference policy and the actions if required, taken if the problem occurs. Also mentions the state environmental planning policy, that any impact on water quality has to be contained and prevented from reaching any water courses. Will such issues be swept under the carpet and hidden under the title of confidentiality? If the project goes ahead, these situations will have a greater significant as six metre shafts and tunnels, shafts and tunnels will traverse through the mountain and create much great water problems, which anybody who works in the coal mining industry around here will understand the water problems they have. With the stated information given to Energy Australia at last Monday's meeting, there was little response and no detailed answers on numerous questions, but one of the Energy Australian reps recommended that it be referred to the EPA. This was considered a good idea and this has been done. In summary, Energy Australia has admitted not to ever doing such a project of this likes before. Numerous questions were asked, the stone wall will give them a complete blank stare. Will this end up another snowy hydro debacle? The project lacks accountability, transparency and professional approach and does not have the backup nor the criteria of a worthy project that can support the area's future economy. Possible destruction of a beautiful dam and providing but a handful of jobs. I implore council to read all future DAs and seriously try to obtain better proposition for the area's economy and future. We see our youth leaving town, sports decreasing, shops empty and we see nothing- and we see nothing in the way of jobs because these projects bring their own labour, as has already been proven in the borehole project. Energy Australia must come up clean on facts and seriously look at a project in the energy industry which will support jobs at least that may replace those lost when Mount Piper is retired off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. We have a couple of minutes left. If there's anyone wishing to speak in public for our time. Thank you. We now come to point eight, point eight-one-eight, sorry, eight-one, Confidential Merrill Minute of the twenty-second of the second, two thousand and twenty-three. This report is confidential in accordance with section ten A two of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three, which permits the meeting to be closed to the public for the business relating to the following. A, personnel matters concerning particular individuals other than councillors. F, matters affecting the security of the council, councillors, council staff or council property. The item deals with individual staffing matters concerning employment and remuneration. Can I have somebody move please a recommendation?
I'll move it.
Thank you, councillor Bryce. Have a second to thank you. Was it councillor O'Connor? Councillor O'Connor? Councillor Bryce? Anybody wishing to speak to this?
Just a question, mayor. What are we actually moving? Just that it moves to close council at the end of the meeting?
That's correct. Yes. If no one has any objections, all those in favour say aye. Thank you. So eight point one confidential has been moved. We'll move on to item nine on page six. Thank you. Can I have somebody move this? Thank you. Councillor Mani? Have a second to thank you?
I'll second it, mayor.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Mani, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Mayor Statham. During the period between the two last meetings, I went on a four thousand kilometre road trip, which I made a deliberate decision to travel through backroads, through regional towns, specifically to convince my wife I was having a holiday, but also for myself to look at how regional towns were reimagining themselves. Regional towns that went through very prosperous periods. Some of them were mining towns, both gold mining, silver, tin, and they'd now moved from that period. There was some legacy wealth in some of them. For others, they faced the same challenges as Lithgow. For me, when I returned, I still remained convinced that this is the place I want to live for its intrinsic values. Its intrinsic values, which we're now realising through the development of the Seven Valleys concept. And I thank Mr. Evangelidis for his comments there, where he's one of these people that have moved to this town, myself twenty-two years ago. But we've all come here because of what we see as the intrinsic values of this place. What continues to be a concern for the residents that I speak to, and it's been the most prominent concern outside the rates, is the unclosed business of what is happening to the West Lithgow precinct. This ambiguity around both the risks it poses to public health and the environment remains a concern and a very strongly held concern. Lithgow people don't necessarily come out into the public to talk about what they feel. But this was a prime example along with another, a number of major issues over the last ten years, where large numbers of people have come out to express their concerns. Their concerns revolve around twofold. That the release of harmful pollutants such as particulate matters, particularly dioxins and heavy metals into the air, soil and residual ash. And keep in mind that whilst the bottom ash may be considered to be safe, the acid removed from the filters has to be returned back to Sydney to be buried in the same way that nuclear waste would be buried. They also are concerned about the impacts these have on farming opportunities, agriculture and food production. There is no safe exposure to these particulars. Moreover, the incinerator process generates a significant amount of greenhouse gases that continues to contribute to climate change, remembering that we're going to burn Sydney's rubbish potentially for twenty-five years, twenty-four hours a day. They're concerned about the landscapes that hold inversion layers and hold particulates into the atmosphere. What's equally concerning is the lack of clarity and transparency regarding the potential locations available for future waste incinerated sites linked to previous land uses. Now, there's no clarity as to what previous land uses could be nominated. Because I'll read directly from the EPA's website, this is not my opinion, on my words, that they have indicated that they're removing the West Lithgow Precinct map. It is no longer necessary to identify the West Lithgow precinct by map. Following withdrawal of Energy Australia's state significant development application for an energy from waste facility in the precinct. This was a project covered by the West Lithgow Precinct and New South Wales' government as determined that it is no longer necessary to identify the precinct in the New South Wales Government Gazette. If you then go on to drop down the next frequently asked box, which carefully covers the answer, it then goes on to state that the West Lithgow precinct will remain a priority infrastructure area as outlined in the New South Wales Government Energy From Waste Infrastructure Plan and under the protection of the Environmental Operations General Amendment, Thermal Energy From Waste Regulation twenty twenty-two. In what is, you know, interesting, quite casual language, that the map may be updated from time to time to accurately reflect planning status proposals in the West Lithgow precinct. The use of codified language for the community describing waste incinerators burning red bin household waste for twenty-four hours a day as energy recovery facilities, the community find insulting. They've cracked the code and what they found is a message that is a stench of dismissal, disregard and disrespect to the community and their concerns. Remaining silent on this matter is not okay. And I challenge all candidates and any candidate in this election, part of a returning government, an incoming government, to declare their position on this. And perhaps if the local member is looking for a musical backdrop to his position on difficult matters for the Lithgow and other areas of regional New South Wales that are having potential projects like this imposed on them, cannot suggest Simon and Garfunkel's The Sound of Silence. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Mani. Councillor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Statham. The New South Wales State Government Waste to Energy Plan is very narrow-minded. The incinerator that is not good enough for Blackdown is definitely not good enough for Lithgow. Well, West Lithgow, which is really the east of Portland, according to the map. My objection to the map is the current government's focus on this technology, that it would affect the environment and the health of our residents. If the current or the next, even the next state government was looking at alternative, environmentally friendly and a source of renewable energy, I wouldn't have any objections. Gasification and incineration are both waste energy technologies. The processes are very different. Logan City Council in Queensland opened an innovative new facility. The project received six million in funding from the Australian Renewable Energy Agency. I'm no expert, but I did meet with Hank Wees, chief executive of H two four two from Queensland, who can explain it better than I. Maybe this is an option instead of incineration. I hope that he has already made contact with you, good self, Mr. Butler, as I would like all of the council to hear what he has to say. But while they propose incineration, I can't support the West Lithgow precinct.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Anybody else wishing to speak on this? Right of reply, councillor Mani? Councillor Leslie?
I was just waiting for someone to, to, to rather speak against the motion, but apparently that's-
Councillor Good- Councillor Leslie?
So again, I ask, I didn't want to speak in favour of the motion if there was somebody who was going to speak against the motion before me.
That's correct. Councillor Goodsell, would you like to speak for or against the motion?
I'm happy to speak against the motion.
I'll have councillor Goodsell speak and then councillor Leslie. Thank you, councillor Goodsell.
Thank you, mayor. The outcome from the March, the second twenty twenty-two council meeting was a well-considered decision. I believe on my part, I've spoken to this matter on numerous occasions. Not everybody agrees. And I've not put my individual perspective forward, but rather the considerations of our entire community. Not all are in opposition and not all are educated on the benefits and the risks. Many, many people that I've spoken to and still speak to request more information and more education. And I represent twenty-odd thousand people. The New South Wales Government has included Lithgow West in its Energy From Waste Infrastructure Plan. At the time, it was very poorly executed with no notice to council nor community. Entirely not good practice. I do concur with councillor Mani with the paragraph that it is imperative that the New South Wales Government and relevant authorities are transparent in information and consultation with the community of the potential future locations of what is energy from waste, waste from energy locations, ensuring the community is informed and involved in the decision-making process. If there were a proposal put before us, I would take the same stance. We need information and we need communication. We currently have no proposal to consider. Was there one put before us, I would possibly take the same position, not to oppose outrightly, but to have all the information regarding the proposal, a cautious and qualified position to be put from council, including all concerns specifically around management of all environmental health and social concerns. It is correct. Tom Evangelidis pointed out tonight, the decision is out of our hands. A blanket opposition possibly could see us with no control whatsoever. And it will go for a moment, but I would like to read the following recommendation from the council meeting in March twenty twenty-two, which highlights council's position. I can just pick the most appropriate, but I guess the whole lot. It's council putting a position that, that does give them some, give us some control. The council retains its concerns in relation to the lack of consultation in selecting a site at Lithgow. The New South Wales Government be requested to deliver an extensive community consultation and engagement programme around energy from waste. Council indicate that whilst it removes its blanket opposition to the Energy From Waste Infrastructure Plan, that this this is conditional upon the government building in mechanisms to ensure economic benefit flows through to communities. Council requests the New South Wales Government provide a dedicated mechanism whereby the government provides investment attraction support for enterprises seeking to locate in the vicinity of energy from waste facilities. Council requests that New South Wales Government provide funding for any required infrastructure to support the establishment of enterprises seeking to locate to the vicinity of energy from waste locations. Council not oppose the inclusion of the site and surrounds of the former Warrarang Power Station as a precinct with the Energy From Waste Infrastructure Plan, subject to further targeted community consultation occurring. A requirement for energy from waste facilities to make ongoing contributions to host local government areas based on tonnages proposed at the facility. The plan be accompanied by a framework to ensure the carbon consequences of energies from waste are dealt with by materially compounding the carbon reduction benefits going well beyond a landfill versus energy from waste offset argument. A specific requirement of green spot that council's non-opposition to inclusion of their site as a precinct is conditional upon further extensive community consultation and agreement of a long-term enduring royalty being paid to council should any future development proposal proceed, which council may use at its discretion on infrastructure, communities, facilities, programmes or ongoing operations. And lastly, while council no longer has a blanket opposition to inclusion in the infrastructure plan and draft regulation, it maintains its right to comment and if necessary, oppose individual developments if it is of the view that environmental planning, health or any other impact outweighs the benefits of a specific project. I think that demonstrates heavily that we didn't just roll over and say we wanted this to happen for no good reason. I think there's very good, sound advice there and I believe it was a well-considered decision at that time and I stand by that. So I'll, no, no further information has been brought forward to me to change my mind, so I won't be supporting. But I understand why you are supporting it. I know why it's written, but I won't be supporting it.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Leslie, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Statham. I support the motion that the West Lithgow precinct be removed from the state government's Energy From Waste Infrastructure Plan. We, Lithgow Council, will not be given the opportunity to consider any incinerator proposal because it will be a state significant development. Toxic fumes will be emitted from any waste incinerator, burning Sydney's waste forever. These toxic gases and particulate matter will accumulate in the environment. The deleterious effects of dioxins are well documented. These toxic gases will concentrate in our valleys. Farmers will have trouble selling their produce either because there will be specific government regulations preventing the sale or because of an informal aversion from buyers not wanting produce grown-
Point of order, Mayor Statham. This is complete hearsay. This is made up. From someone who has never been to any of the presentations from the people proposing this facility.
Councillor Leslie, you've used the word toxic now. I've written down a number of occasions. We've asked you not to do that before because it's not proven that it's toxic. Councillor McGee, I will let councillor Leslie finish, but if he starts talking political or toxic, I will stop the conversation immediately. Thank you. Continue, councillor Leslie.
These toxic gases will concentrate in our valleys. Farmers-
Councillor Leslie, I said if you use the word toxic again, I now release you from speaking about that anymore. Right of reply, councillor Mani. Thank you.
No, point of order.
Excuse me, I did say to you, I'm not going to argue with you, so tell me what you think.
Toxic is an English word which has been in the language since the seventeenth century. It is not obscene or blasphemous. It is well within my constitutional right of free speech to use the word toxic in this debate. And, and should, should you wish to use, you know, if should you wish to call the emissions healthy or wholesome, I would not complain. I might laugh, but I would not infringe your right to constitutional, your constitutional right to free speech. And, and I will, and I will not-
Point of order, sorry, Mayor Statham.
Yes.
I'd like councillor McGee to stop interrupting councillor Leslie. We just need the, he's got every right to speak and I believe that he should be heard.
Excuse me, councillor Goodsell, thank you for that. Councillor McGee, just refrain from speaking. Councillor Leslie, it's free speech. Let him go on. As long as he wishes, we'll stay here tonight. So keep going, councillor.
Right, well, just, just in case didn't, anyone didn't get it, these toxic fumes from, from any waste incinerator will remain in our environment in Lithgow forever. The ash that's produced from these incinerators is toxic and remains toxic forever. We've, we've heard, and this is not, this is not hearsay, we've heard that it has to be treated like nuclear waste. It's- We just can't, we just can't sort of pretend that it's not toxic. Local residents will not be able to grow vegetables in their own backyards. Local schools will have to keep children inside. The belief that the incinerators will generate other industries is misplaced. Modern clean industries will avoid our local government area like the plague. Why come to Lithgow, Warrarang or Portland, when there are so many clean areas elsewhere in the state in which to set up new industries? And never forget that the government can reinstate Baralaro's map at any time and in any configuration they wish. If councillors believe that these toxic incinerators won't be built because the map is gone, then of course they have no excuse but to vote for this motion. I recommend the motion. We need Lithgow to be positive, look to the future, look to encourage industry into our area that would want to come. Industry that won't come here, the belief that this will bring jobs to, to our area is misplaced. They don't want to come here. They don't want to come here. Why why would a general manager want to set up a business when he knows? That the plumes of this toxic incinerator will be around forever. It's just, it's just mind-bogglingly narrow-minded and. It's, it's just incredible that people just can't see that, I understand. I can't understand, so I recommend the motion.
Thank you, Council Lesley, write a reply, Council Amani.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Statham. Firstly, I just want to thank Council Goodsell, I appreciate that you're able to articulate to me why. You have a alternative view to me. And whilst I disagree with your view, I respect your right to put that forward and I think it's important in these meetings of council. Which are the meeting of elected people, that those elected people get an opportunity to speak the views and thoughts of their community. Some of which I've heard of yours. Um, however, I still remain unconvinced of the the health and um. Environmental impacts and I still will go back to the fact that we had a free panel. Independent expert panel look at the Western Sydney option. And it was deemed that it wasn't good enough for Sydney. I'm not going to take apart as a councillor to pick up the warmed-up leftovers of ideas from Sydney. Which are taken out into the region for delivery. I think we can imagine bigger and better things and and certainly I can't support it. I have a big problem with the fact that the map is no longer there. The map when it was originally drawn involved a lot of geographic challenging for those people who drew it. They described it as West Lithgow, but the map showed Portland, but they really meant Willarrawang. Now, when I see that level of rigor go into the process. My concern now lies that the map is able to be redrawn anywhere in the Lithgow precinct. So what land use constitutes a suitable land use for a facility like this? Does it, an ex-waste management facility, is that an appropriate location? Lithgow, Willarrawang, is that appropriate? That's the concern that sits with a lot of people now is that they're failing to be direct and honest. About where these, where this precinct sits. That's my problem, I think we've got a significant future which I'm greatly confident in. But I I'm I'm sorry, I don't share the people's vision of of this being part of it. And the fact that I voted against what was an extremely well-developed waste management strategy. Was because of the inclusion of the state waste to energy hierarchy. It's unfortunate, it's 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 a very difficult decision for me to do. But I can't support this, so I suggest that we move the recommendation and I thank you, Mayor Statham.
Thank you, Council Amani, all those in favour say aye. Against. Call a division, thank you, all those in favour say aye. Council Amani, Council Lesley, Council Coleman, against. Council Goodwin, Council Goodsell, Council Bryce, Council O'Connor, Council McGee and Council Statham, thank you. Ten point one, people and services, building and in and development.
Happy to move. Happy to second.
Who's moved it? Can you just please refrain, I can't read out and look up and see who's um moving and seconding. So if you can just wait until I've finished, so the, no, sorry, I hadn't, it's all right. Uh, who seconded that, thank you, Council Bryce. Council Goodsell.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, this is a pretty straightforward report, just the calling in of a development application that was submitted in uh twenty thirteen. That's come be- coming before us again with some significant modifications. Um, it doesn't have the names of the people um who have called it in, but I do believe there's been a few of us. Um, I've had significant representation from Maranguru residents, um I've had many, many emails and some meetings, I'll be catching up. With the rest of those in due course, um I'll be very interested to see these modifications come before council and council's position on that.
Thank you, Council Goodsell, Council Bryce.
Um, again, I've had quite a bit of representation on this matter. This needs to come in front of council, we need to look at all the amendments that are going to be made to these um, the DA. And we need to consider them for the benefit of the community out there.
Thank you, Council Bryce, anybody else wishing to speak, Council Coleman?
Yes, please, Mayor Statham, as Councilor Goodsell and Councilor Bryce, I've also had phone calls in regards to this issue. I do have a question, will there be a site inspection being arranged? Generally, when we call the DA and it goes out and it comes back, we have an option, we have previously to meet with residents, to have a look at the site, will that be offered?
Uh, I'll take that question on notice and um and certainly advise the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr General Manager, thank you, Council Coleman, anyone else wishing to speak for or against this, Council Lesley?
Just wondering, can I ask who actually did call in this um modification?
I think there are a series of councillors, um but certainly Councilor Goodsell and Councilor Coleman, I think. It has, has been. But I may not have covered all of them, uh we've received numerous representations in emails and phone calls.
It has been the practice in the past that the councillor, councillors who have called it in have their names recorded, I think that should be maintained.
Uh, apparently that's not necessary, Council Lesley. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against?
Why have they been?
I think it's been a hotly discussed topic amongst every councillor in this room.
I got that, I got that.
Hmm.
I got that, but why, why has the policy changed about?
But you can say the policy changed.
No, no, the policy of naming.
We're dealing with ten point one, uh the building and development, so anybody else wishing to speak on this matter, thank you.
So you you won't answer the questions.
I don't know the answer, Council Lesley.
So perhaps you could ask the general manager.
I'll take that on notice, thank you.
Perhaps you could ask the general manager, he's sitting right beside you as to why.
I said I would take that on notice, Council Lesley, anybody else wishing to speak for or against it?
Uh, yes.
Council Amani.
As a councillor that's called in, I'll be clear that I've had significant representations on on this matter. And um and this is a significant modification to the DA, so I'm I'm happy to look at it when it comes in as modified form.
Thank you, Council Amani, anybody else wishing to speak on the matter? Write a reply, Council Goodsell, thank you.
Uh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Council Goodsell.
Are you gonna put the motion, Mayor?
All those in favour say aye. I'll ha- call a division, thank you, all those in favour say aye. The entire councillors, thank you unanimously, thank you, minute taker. DA Warehouse, one forty Maud Street, Lithgow. Council O'Connor is going to declare a con- has declared a conflict to it. Oh, sorry, right, all right, sorry. Oh, yes, no, he doesn't have to declare a conflict of interest with this one. Um, have somebody please move?
I'll move this.
Thank you, Council Coleman and Council Amani. Council Coleman.
Thanks, Mayor Statham, my understanding of the DA is a council, the Lithgow Depot, which is generally needed. I have no issues with the report, I actually thank the staff for the report, I think it's a good report. I only have one question, I note in the report that it says. One existing street tree currently heavily pruned due to overhead power lines is proposed to be removed. So facilitate the new access from Maud Street. I have no issue with that, but will there be trees to replace it? Will we be gre- greening the area, because I think that's important.
Mr Edchcombe, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Statham, most certainly, there's a council policy that governs tree removal wherever. Wherever possible, we replace them with a more suitable species in a just as prominent location.
Thank you, Mr Edchcombe, thank you, Council Coleman, anyone else wishing to speak to this?
Uh, just briefly, I was actually in the street when the store's building collapsed. And during that very intense storm, it would also close my wife's business at that point. Uh, because as the storm was extracting air out of buildings, it actually sucked the ceiling up. And then dropped it down into the, into the shop. The, for the building there, it 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 basically drew down a brick wall which uh spilled across the road, so it was quite a significant storm, so. Um, I suppose it's, the thing is, we do get a modernised facility. And I think it's important that we modernise our our council building, so. Um, I'm I'm glad this has come in front of us now and that we're moving on from that event, so um, yep, so happy to support it.
Thank you, Council Amani, Council Goodsell.
Actually, I do have a question. Over the last five years, there's been multiple representations from communities saying that they think that that area, that. Look as you drive into town, um you know, it's messy, it's untidy, can we screen it? And the response has always been, not screen it, but green it, like, um, you know, block out that unsightly. Look and it's always been the response, I believe, that you need it to be open for security reasons, is that correct, Mr Edchcombe?
That's right.
Through you, Mayor Statham, that is typically correct, however, there has been modernisation of all of our CCTV equipment through that site. Uh, and there's regular security patrols, so uh if the council wishes, there's, that's always something that we can review.
Sounds like a good idea. Um, anybody else wishing to speak to this, for or against? I'll call the division, please, all those in favour, oh, write a reply, Council Coleman.
Thanks, Mayor Statham, yeah, I believe that it should be greened it, not screened it, I really like that um statement, I'm gonna steal that, Council Goodsell. Um, and I think that's a really important thing, if we can put more trees there, that'd be fabulous. Through you, Mayor, through to Mr Edchcombe, that'd be great.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye, this is the division, thank you. Unanimous with all councillors, thank you, minute taker. Council Connors are leaving the room, he's declared a conflict of interest. Can I have a move please for this? I'll move, Council Bryce, Council Goodwin, second, yeah. Council Goodwin, would you like to speak to that? Council Bryce.
This is, this is a great DA proposal for Lithgow, a new bunnings, taking it away from the main street. Where it's dangerous, there's no parking, trying to cross the road there. Try and open the doors to try and get out of your car, it's absolute in mayhem, um. I I'm looking forward to a bigger bunnings, one that we don't have to leave town to go and buy parts. We actually will be able to get them in the bunnings that we have in our town, this is gonna be a great asset to our, to our area, thank you.
Thank you, Council Bryce, Council Goodwin.
No, I agree with the recommendation from council, uh the development, we'll see an activation of that precinct. It'll bring much needed jobs to town, it will also mitigate the traffic problems uh around the existing bunnings. The bunnings site will also uh fare in comparison with other bunnings sites such as towns like Orange and Bathurst. People will be able to shop locally at the store due to a larger range of products. The bunnings store will almost certainly activate this area with other businesses wanting to uh to come there. We'll clean up the site that has been an old mine site since the early eighties. It's the largest and possibly the only new shop development in our precinct. Uh, since Aldi, which has been in the area for at least fifteen years. This can only mean good things for our shopping area of town. All of these, all of the issues that have been outlined have been addressed. Normal trading hours will cease at six P M, mine subsidence is addressed and also the traffic has also been addressed, so I'm. Uh, supporting this DA.
Thank you, Council Goodwin, anyone else wishing to speak for or against?
I I have some questions if I, if I may.
Certainly, Council Lesley.
Were the residents of Hill Street and and Silkock Street advised that their street would be an access to the site? Specifically advised as opposed to it just being part of the the overall general DA that was in in the council?
Uh, Mr General Manager?
Uh, Mayor, we suffer from not having Mr McGrath or Mr Cashell here today, they're both ill in fact. Um, but I know that the assessment report uh confirms that the notification has been undertaken. Uh, to potentially affected landowners in accordance with council's policies.
Thank you, Mr General Manager. Anyone else wishing, have you have more questions?
Well, yes, I have more.
Certainly.
More questions, I don't think that quite answered my question, but I'll I'll leave it. Another question is, is there access, I couldn't say it from the, from the plan. Uh, for start, the the map of the. The map was actually upside down, I mean, the north is normally at the top of the map, but this particular one was upside down, but that's. No, you're there, I guess. Is the uh, is there access be through the site? From Valley Road to Hill Street and Silkock Street? Does it, you know, or is it, can, you know, can cars go from Valley Road to Silkock Street through this site?
Mr General Manager?
Um, Mayor, I can only answer again that I can't deal with the specifics, I remind councillors if they do have these specific questions, we can deal with it. If we receive them beforehand, we can deal with them, but what I can say, Council Lesley and councillors. Is that this application, because it was a complex application for a major development. Uh, was reviewed by an an expert planning consultant with considerable experience. So I can't answer the specifics, but what I can say, when the traffic issues and in fact all of the material considerations were looked at. They're all covered in the assessment report and on balance, um that consultant and our planning manager. And our director of planning, Michael McGrath, are recommending approval subject to those conditions. But if you, if I do have specific questions, if councillors have a mind to deal with this, I can answer those subsequently uh tomorrow by way of memory.
Thank you, Mr General Manager.
If I could, I, I'm afraid I can't support this uh DA without an answer to that very question. Because it would worry me very much if if that uh site ends up being a rat run. From West Lithgow to East Lithgow and East Lithgow to West Lithgow through through the, through the site. Uh, it's, the the residents of Hill Street and Silkock Street would not be aware of, would not be, I I don't believe they are aware of this. I've looked, I've I've read the the report here very clearly, you know, very carefully, those those questions I asked. And not, not only are they not answered, they're not even referred to. So I can't, I can't assess whether this, this is true or not. But yet, should we pass this resolution, pass this recommendation tonight? Then of course it's, it becomes the DA, a- and the issue can't be, can't be resolved, can't be. Can't be undone if it is the case that it's becomes a rat run. Uh, and and rat runs are are dangerous, they they, they're ve- very, very poor for the people who live there, they they're unaware of what what's happening and suddenly they. You know, people dodging, uh dodging the sort of main roads, deciding this is the way to to avoid. R B Ts, all sorts of reasons that why, why people may or may not do this. Uh, and it's wrong, and I would think that with with the other issue that we have. But due to the sensitive association of this development with councillors, that this report needs to be put back for further comments. So so that that very specific question can be answered. And and it should be further appraised by an independent town planner. Uh, I think with, at at the moment, it's uh, it's been rushed, uh the questions haven't been answered. It's his, of course, you know, the absolute failure of of this council not to support. You know, the the idea of a, a biz- uh of of a development committee.
Point of order, Mayor Statham, what what is he talking about?
Uh, Council Lesley, I think you've had your say, we're quite clear on what your ideas are. Um, I, there are no more questions available because we haven't got the correct staff here tonight. There is a report, there has been a separate person, company go over all this, it's been, it hasn't been rushed through. It's been a long, arduous task with full transparency. Anyone else wishing to speak tonight?
I I ga- again object, this this.
I'm going to rule on the point of order, I accept Council McGee's point of order, you're off track. You're insinuating that the council has not been transparent and done their work. Read the report totally and fully and you'll understand there's been another body come in to go through all of this.
The very question I asked has not been answered.
We explained to you, Mister Mc- Mister. We explained to you, Mister Mc, Mister.
And it's not my fault, it's not my fault that the staff are not here.
It's not my neither.
It's not my, it's not my fault that we get a business paper on, on Wednesday or Thursday before a meeting. And suddenly we're expected to, to know these questions and answers.
Point of order, councillor Bryce, put your point of order. Councillor Leslie, I'm asking you to refrain from speaking now. This is your first warning. Councillor, councillor, yes, so you've got people walking out now, councillor Leslie. Councillor.
I'm not surprised they're walking out.
Councillor Bryce, could you please, um, explain what your point of order is?
Can we just move on? We've already ruled on what, what's going on, please?
I'll have to dismiss that councillor, uh, uh, councillor Bryce. Uh, councillor Leslie, I'm asking you to finish your last question in a manner fitting of a councillor. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. This development application is for a major building that will affect many people in, in that area. However, the council has brought it to the, the council's administration, has brought it to this council without adequate staff to answer the very questions. We're told we'll get answers in a memo, but the answers we get in a memo are after we carry this motion. It's, it's not, it's not appropriate for a major development, a million dollar development. It's not appropriate that we don't get answers to these questions. And I think it's, it's, and as a result, I want to move an, I'll, I'll move an amendment, which is that that this DA be deferred so that for a, a council information session, which is open to the community, open to the residents, so that questions can be asked by the public and, and we have relevant staff present to answer those questions. And, and that further, that the, the whole DA be be referred to an independent town planner for their assessment.
Do I have a second to that amendment? Thank you.
I'll second it for the purpose of debate.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Leslie.
I don't wish to speak to it any further. I just believe that the, except if the stu-, if the administration is unable to provide staff here for a multi-million dollar development such as this, then we need to defer this motion until we have adequate staff and adequate answers to questions such as the ones I've asked.
Councillor Coleman. Anybody else wishing to speak? Councillor McGee?
Yes, I find it untenable. The insinuation that council staff have not shown due diligence in this full process is just, it's a shocking indictment on councillor Leslie. Disgusted.
Thank you, councillor McGee. Councillor Bryce?
This DA has already gone through a pro-, uh, a independent, so, what's that? No, it's the amendment. This has already gone through an independent town planner. Why do we do, have to do it again at an extra cost to the council?
Councillor Bryce, anyone else wishing to speak? Councillor Marney?
Uh, look, it does put me in a bit of an unteniable sister situation. I wanted to talk to the motion, but I'm, I'm now stuck with the amendment. Um, the amendment issue that councillor Leslie, no matter how people perceive, he's brought it forward, is a point of concern. I actually rang staff today to talk to this matter. So, my concern is, is that, similar to councillor Leslie's, if the private road depicted on the plan is activated to Hill Street at this stage as part of this DA, that, that causes a problem for me. The traffic studies were done on a, four days before Christmas, which gave a poor reflection on the, on, on the, uh, traffic. Uh, the submission free addresses that and the response from council staff actually responded to the issue of, of the impact on Valley Road and Hassan's Walls Road. It is a concern. I hope it's something that can be resolved because I'm actually supportive of the DA. Um, it's just unfortunate. I, I don't know how to go forward with this because I'm, I don't have the answers to the question. I, I will read a bit out of the report and perhaps if I can get clarification, I don't know if I can. That it states a new road will be constructed from Valley Drive that will ultimately be connected to Silkock Street and Hill Street in accordance with the Pottery Estate indicative structure plan in chapter nine of the Lithgow Development Control Plan. Now, that isn't part of this DA. Now, I'm hoping I can get some indication because I, unfortunately, and I, and I don't wish it to go back to a, a deferment, but I cannot as a councillor make a decision on a, on an issue which I don't think was picked up by staff. And that is the fact that once we connect Lithgow High School via the residential road of Hill Street, it then becomes directly linked to the shopping centre and we take people off Bean Street and Mort Street. I do have some concerns about that. So, it's just very unfortunate that we're stuck in a position where I can't get an answer. If there's a condition on this DA which says that the private road is, is not open for extension into, uh, Silkock and, and, uh, Hill Street, I can, I can be pal-, that's palatable for me. But I, I just think that this hasn't, I, I actually don't see the, the play between this development, which I think is a very valuable development, which can activate that space. I agree with councillor, what councillor Bryce talked to, that the building is not fit for purpose where Bunnings currently is. There's significant uh, limitations to that. I agree with what councillor Goodwin also spoke to as far as the employment numbers in our speaker on behalf of Bunnings. I just find it very difficult when we, the submission came in, but it, it wasn't something that was recognised. So that's, that's a problem for me. I have to feel confident of our procedures and I'm unable to make a, a decision on this. Uh, so if the DA is as it stands and Valley, the, the private road which is shown in the plans has no access via Silkock and Hill Street, there may be subsequent developments that come forward in that landscape that may want to activate it, but I think there has to be careful consideration of the relationship between Valley Road, Hills, Hill Street, Lithgow High School and the shopping centre and South Bowen Fels, that it doesn't become another Mort Street. So, this is a quiet residential street. I'm supportive of the DA, but I just can't move forward on that issue. So I'm not, I'm not playing any games here. I'm, I'm being completely straight on this one end. Um, if I can get an answer, that may assist me to move forward with this.
Thank you, councillor Marney. Anybody else wishing to speak? Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah. Can I just get some clarification? Does the D C P activate Hill Street, not the DA, through you? The D C P and not the DA activates Hill Street? And, so while you're thinking about that, also, uh, with the traffic management study, if it's done four days before Christmas, wouldn't that be a, a highly busy ti- a busier time of, of the time of year to do the study? Rather than, uh, another time where, where there's left, less traffic? And if it passes at that time, why wouldn't it pass it any other time?
Um, I can answer some of those, uh, questions. So I can speak with great clarity, um, that council's officers have, um, separately, uh, tested, um, the modeling which was done, I think on, in, in December, just in the lead up to Christmas. Uh, but in fact, uh, post the holidays, the school holiday period, they've, uh, tested and done traffic counts at the intersections and established that, um, the uh, traffic counts that, uh, were done during the December period are reflective of the circumstance um, outside of that, either busy or quieter. So, uh, they've, uh, they've separately tested that. Um. I only repeat again, and this is an example. I appreciate that councillors won't be right down in the very specific detail of an application. Um, but this application has been assessed by a planner that I know has very high regard and a deep experience. And, uh, Paul Cashell, our planning manager, of course, has decades of experience. And you have before you a report, uh, which has had regard for all of the traffic, uh, movements of this development. It's my understanding that this development is being of, of course planned now, uh, and subsequently there will be a road pattern laid out, um, accord- in accordance with the Pottery Estate D C P. So those pieces will come together, but this application's been assessed by the experts and found on balance, um, to be adequately managing, uh, the traffic impacts. Uh, that's the report you have before you. Um, I can't answer, and even if my planners here, they may not be able to answer all of these, um, specific scenarios. But you have before you a report, um, which has been prepared by experts and, uh, the options available to the council, uh, to, um, approve, refuse or defer.
Thank you, Mister General Manager. Any other debate? Councillor Leslie, write a reply, please. This is the amendment. Councillor Leslie, write a reply, please.
I can't vote for this un- until I get answers to those questions. They're, they're simple questions. They should have been anticipated. We should have had staff here to do it. We haven't done that. I feel, I feel that it was po- poorly handled by the administration. It's not a, wi- with a multimillion dollar development like this, we have no one here to answer the questions. I, I, I find that totally, totally unacceptable. So, I, until I get answers to those questions, I won't vote for it.
Thank you, councillor Leslie. I'll put the amendment. All those in favour of councillor Leslie's amendment? Councillor Marney, councillor Leslie, councillor Coleman, against. Councillor Goodwin, councillor Bryce, councillor Goodsell, councillor McGee. I'll hold a division on that. Thank you. All those in favour of the amendment? Councillor Bryce, uh, sorry, councillor Marney, Leslie and Coleman, against. Councillor McGee, councillor Bryce, councillor Goodsell, councillor Goodwin and councillor Statham. Uh, that is lost. The amendment is lost. We go back to the motion. Thank you. And, uh, write a reply.
No, I'd like to speak now. I'd like to speak on the original motion, please.
Councillor Coleman.
Thank you, Mayor Statham. This development ke- ticks a lot of boxes. It does. It ticks jobs, opens up the area, activates the area. Car parking will be a bonus. And I agree with a lot of what councillor Goodwin said and councillor Goodsell said. Oh, sorry, or councillor Bryce, um, said. Look, I actually agree with that. I think the DA is good in the sense that it will bring people into Lithgow, not have them, you know, drive past us. I understand where councillor Leslie's coming from. Um, we received correspondence from Mister Robbuck. He has issues with traffic flows. And I can understand his point of view. It's a shame that the staff aren't here. Everybody gets sick. I understand it. Mister McGrath's sick and that's not on purpose and I hope he gets better. I'm, I'm going to put my faith into the council. I'm going to vote for this DA and trust that the process was followed correctly, that the independent planning coordinator has done the right job. And I hope that the traffic issues that have been mentioned in this debate don't come to fruition.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Anyone else wishing to speak? Councillor Goodsell?
I'm not going to go over what everyone else has already said. I had had those things mentioned, I think. Hundred parking for a hundred and fourteen vehicles, accessibility, disability. That's some of the things that I can take besides the ignition of the area. All my questions were answered during the week in the lead up to this meeting. Um, I don't have a problem with it at all. The sooner we get it up, the better off we'll be.
Thank you, councillor Good, uh, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Bryce? Councillor Marney?
Thank you. Um, oh, I, I do want to speak to this. Uh, I do see this as a significant employment boost. I do see it as a significant activation. I'm very supportive of it going forward. Um, I had concerns about the cumulative impact on stormwater systems. I did talk to staff today. I'm convinced that that has been addressed and that there are stormwater detention and, and, and biofilters systems being put, put in place. We do have a branch of that stormwater trunk which is causing significant flooding. Uh, the flood risk man- management plan, which comes up later, it'll be quite visual to people on that map. We have a business that's only just replaced its, uh, flooring from flood damage, um, at that location. They've been closed for over a month. So, I appreciate what staff have done in, as far as considering that matter. I think it's the, the challenge remains those three intersections in West Ma- West Main Street. And this is one of them that needs amplification as we put in nearly six thousand square metres of great outcatchment. That can happen, but we need to take the risk mitigation actions with it. So, this is something I brought forward in the first council meeting I sat in. Um, I continue and I will continue to publicly applaud the staff for getting back to the fundamentals around this. Um, and I'm, I'm very pleased that that was considered in this DA. Um, the traffic planning, I, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, it, it didn't capture the full suite of the impact. I've been accused of placing my faith in the council and hope, and other words have been used in front of me. I actually haven't spoken to councillor Coleman about her final words there, but I'm going to extend a trust that this has been done and I have confidence in the staff members moved. But we do need to ensure that the cumulative traffic impacts of these developments is considered in my mind. I'm not a planner. Um, so I won't pretend to be one, but for the residents of Hill Street, there is a significant issue coming forward. And I'm asking the council carefully consider this in anything that comes forward in that landscape as far as the connection between Valley Road and Hill Street. Um, setting that aside, I'm happy to support the DA, uh, but I, 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 it's put me in a very difficult position. I'm someone who, who is very strong on procedures, but not ridiculously bound that I'm so risk averse that I can't make a decision. But, but I, councillor Leslie isn't incorrect what he said. So, how he's put it might not be the way people want to hear it, but it, it does, it's unfortunately created some doubt in my mind about this, but I'm going to take it on face value. I'm going to look at the merits of this and go with it. And I'm going to trust that, that consideration of that road being linked together causes all sorts of problems. So the Hassan's Road intersection plus the, um, right round to Wright's Road intersection, which is ca- just recently been closed. So, I'd, I'd ask that, that be considered in any future development. So I'll, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marney. Write a reply, councillor Bryce.
Um, I'm right. I think everything's been covered tonight.
I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. This is the division, please. Uh, councillor Goodwin, councillor Goodsell, councillor Bryce, councillor Marney, councillor McGee, councillor Coleman, councillor Statham, uh, councillor Leslie against. That, uh, that's been carried. Thank you. I must say, yes, it's worth giving a clap. Thank you for the Bunnings representative today. It's a great day for Lithgow. Well done. Thank you, councillors, for having faith in our staff.
Point of order.
Your point of order, councillor Leslie?
I think all coun-, all, all councils, uh, have faith in our staff. It's just that the processes should be clear and, and open so that there's no question in the public about, about it.
Thank you, councillor Leslie. The next item now. Item ten point one, point two, point one, six monthly progress report. Could I have somebody move this report? Thank you.
Happy to move.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Goodwin. Councillor Goodsell, would you like to speak to that?
Uh, just briefly, another demonstration. Uh just briefly, another demonstration that this council continues to operate and deliver despite the current environment. Uh Mister Butler gives a uh an overview on our achievements in the last six months. And I congratulate staff for getting these big projects over the line. They're all si- significant, but I think seven hundred and thirty one thousand dollars of workforce savings is significant. Um the waste strategy, of course, the integrated wa- water cycle management strategy. The Clarence to Walera Wang Pipeline Project and. The progress on Cullen Bull and Suri's screen uh scheme are all noteworthy to to me. I I see that Woggin Valley's part of it. I don't think it was scheduled works, but the the hard work that's gone into that is is noted also.
Thank you, Counselor Goodsell. Counselor Goodwin?
Yeah, I also agree with Counselor Goodsell, and I would also like to uh add in. Um that they've missed out a significant amount of road repairs, which is ongoing works. Around the entire L G A and this fix doesn't happen overnight. It's a major uh it's major planning to ensure that it's delivered to the community and it's constantly occurring. So well done.
Thank you, Counselor Goodwin. Anybody else wishing to speak to this? Counselor Coleman?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Statham. Um I only have some questions. I note in the report that it states that workforce resilience has also be- has also been a major challenge. Because there's a general shortage of eligible workers available to fill vacancies in the area such as planning, buildings, dedication, finance and engineering. My question is, is there an opportunity um to possibly look at in-house training programme to bring. Those from, say, middle management up through or lower management up through. Is there an opportunity to cover that? We've got in-house training programmes perhaps, which acknowledges talent. Encourages talent and then bring them up through, like Mister Edgum once did.
Uh thank you for that question, Mayor. Yes, um the mayor and I actually attended the first meeting of the Central New South Wales Joint Organisation. In Forbes last Thursday, and this was one of the topics of discussion, the skill shortage. It's a shortage across the whole region. In fact, across the whole local government sector. And um yes, we're doing uh we're doing um taking many initiatives. Uh growing our own is the term that we're using. Uh we think there's uh we know there's great talent in this city. Um so there's numerous uh traineeships, graduates. Our workforce area are really doing a deep dive into all of the initiatives that we can undertake. I'm an immense fan of um uh in local government, you can start at one point and and end up uh three. Careers are to the left or the right. So um we certainly will be looking at um in-house training. We already provide generous educational assistance. And uh we're also looking to allow our uh our workforce um to to diversify. But we're also reaching into the youth across the city uh with traineeships and graduate programmes.
Thank you. I have another question, if I may, Mayor Statham.
Yes, Counselor Coleman.
Um I note on the bottom of the report that you mentioned Visitors Information Centre rebranding as Seven Valleys. What I'd like to see, if we could get an update on how that's actually working. If we could have um management from the Visitors Information Centre come and discuss and show us. What's actually happening, how it's being rebranded, what's the success rate of it? That'd be really great.
Yeah, Mayor, I remind the council, we've had one briefing on that, but there's another organised for the thirteenth of March.
Thank you, Mister General Manager and Counselor Coleman. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Mahoney?
Uh I won't go over, but reiterate those again. These reports are very useful for informing our community about the significant works that are going on out there. Understand that there's obviously some issues with delivery. We've got thirty five percent that's um having some challenges. Shall I say, but um I don't think anyone in in the construction industry anywhere is uh having a a sweet run of. Getting things done over the last twelve months. Um I have a question about the the employment cost savings. I just wanted a clarification. Is this through salary savings because of vacancies or is it through structural reforms?
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. Mister Gurney will answer your question.
Through you, Mayor St- Mayor Statham. This was a budget strategy that was put in place. We we it's not a sustainable strategy, it's a one-year strategy, or in fact, we've we've used it for two years. So it is salary savings that really relate to positions that we haven't been able to fill. And also the time lag between um an employee leaving and being able to recruit a replacement.
Okay. I'll just make one further comment. It is, big organisations carrying key vacancies does create fatigue within staff. I know we've raised issues. It's not our role to get down into the operational landscape. Uh I did express some concerns about the the structure. I think. Yes, it's going to be a challenge getting the appropriately qualified people into the organisation. But um I just want to say, I think most of the councillors do recognise the depth of work that's going on. And understand that there are significant challenges with vacancies, so. That that that's all. But otherwise, I I I thank you for your report again, Mister Gurney.
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney, and thank you, Mister Gurney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Write a reply, Counselor Goodsell? No? All those in favour, say aye. Against, carried, unanimous, thank you. Ten point one point two point two, flood blame risk management study and plan. Counselor Mahoney, you're leaving the room or you're staying in the room? All right, move it, thank you.
Happy to second.
Um I've had a bit of an extended period on this. Um I I was a community rep in the previous council term. And then in turn became a council law representative. Um I this has involved a considerable body of work. It's a it's a very important and. Uh con- consequential plan. Um and I would like to thank Counselor Goodsell. Who was there in lots of the forming stage and also later on and. And also thank the staff involved because um and particularly if I could mention uh Cheryl and Hannah and Christian Matthews. Um and obviously Jonathan as well, um uh Edgum. Uh it's a very consequential report in that it identifies the property I'm currently living in. And the property I'm moving to as being significantly flood impacted. Um how we inform the community of this is important. I think we have to have a very uh well, uh because we're putting it out for twenty eight days, we need to bring this to people's attention. Uh for people living in those locations, there will be immediate consequences. And some of those will revolve around their insurance. Um the place I'm currently living at has a significant bump up. To for me to cover flood insurance. So um we have situations in regional areas where people. Where they're not in good economic positions, may choose to roll the dice and not go with insurance. So there's there is significant um education and conversations that need to happen with our our community. Um I all I all I can say is that um. I also appreciate one element which I'm very pleased about. Um is that they've looked at detention systems and I've I'm not a flood engineer. But I'm involved in works that mitigates floods and I build these sort of structures on every week. Um we need to turn the tap down in that at at the outside of the catchment rather than trying to make the plug hole bigger all the time. And I think the fact that they've looked at the high school as a possible uh point. Um we've got the amplification of drainage happening in in uh George Coats uh street, and again, I really want to acknowledge that. There is a low lying priority in the plan, which I I don't believe is low. And I think that's the investigation of the interplay with flooding and sewer. Um the public health issue that rises out of that is significant. And I again want to thank uh the staff and particularly Matthew Trapp's staff who have commenced. That uh investigation into how stormwater is entering into the sewerage system. So we we've talked about the fact that we've got a four point two gigalit, I think it is. Help me if I've got the gigas and megas wrong. Um capacity in our sewer treatment plant, and we're having tenfold of that entering during storm events. So it's clearly not everybody rushing to the toilet when it starts raining. So we've got floodwater interplaying with that, so. I'm really appreciative of the complexity of this planning. But also the fact that we've got a council that's getting back to the fundamentals and getting these things right, so. Um I look forward to the next stages of this and thank everyone for their work.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Mahoney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Goodsell?
Thank you. I seconded that one, Mayor.
Yes.
Um I would just like to um say well done to Counselor Mahoney. He's taken over and obviously um got a lot of experience in this area and has added his expertise. Uh very important uh that we've reviewed that that old document with an up-to-date modelling. I don't know if anybody, um Mister, yeah, Mister Trapp, see, someone can answer some questions through you, Mayor, if that's okay?
Certainly. Are these to Mister Trapp?
Uh yes, um I just wanted to, on page twenty one, it's got um, I just don't know how you do it, so. Uh implement flood warning systems. It's not like we 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 never get them. We're not like Bathurst. We're not a a low-lying area where you can gradually see water ri- rise. It seems to come. Centralised in one big dump. How how do we manage that? We never seem to be part of that uh community. That gets the S E S warnings for for flood risks et cetera. So how do how does that work?
Mister Trapp, thank you.
I'll I'll take this one.
Definitely not Mister Trapp.
No, that's okay. So generally, it's through the implementation of a number of stream gauges along Farmers Creek that that can determine. Depth and velocity of flow. Uh they track then um uh measure the behaviour of the floodwaters. And issue issue warnings to relevant properties accordingly. It's generally a stepped, like a tiered approach. If the, you know, uh and and residents are notified based on their um their affectation in one in fifty, one in a hundred or the probable maximum flood. So it's there's a bit of infrastructure uh that requires installation to to track the flows. Uh and then there's an S M S based system that's implemented as a result.
So just to follow up on that, so January last year when we had that massive flood event and my home in Amian Street was went under, but. But Farmers Creek properties didn't. So is it just going to be more than Farmers Creek that's going to be an alert or?
So it's various points throughout the catchment. So so Farmers Creek upstream would be a primary spot to locate it. But there's also other tributaries that and um uh overland flow paths that run into Farmers Creek that can be models as well.
And if I could ask another question question, what what's the voluntary house purchase and raising study? Like thirty eligible uh residential properties with high hazard flood areas and raising of twenty five dwellings. What what does that include?
So through you, Mayor Statham, it's a it's a voluntary programme. Uh we've we've conducted it historically uh for two or three dwellings in the past. Uh that were uh along Farmers Creek and highly susceptible for flood. Uh we consulted with those residents. We um we we studied the the value of those properties and offered uh market price. And that they were purchased, demolished and removed from the flood plain. Uh so it's so it's a voluntary programme. It does need external funding to to implement. Uh but we we engage deeply with the community. We identify what the opportunities are. For house raising for selected properties that are, you know, um uh that are that are eligible. Um and for those that aren't eligible, there may be voluntary purchase schemes for rebuilding elsewhere.
Thank you very much. I was just going to finish with, it it is vital. Um Counselor Mahoney touched on the. The amount of consultation, these people will be shocked. They're going to have um, you know, uh impacts if if they want to. You know, obviously sell their home or develop their home, um so that they're getting down and and up personal with them is going to be very difficult.
Thank you, Counselor Goodsell. Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Coleman?
Yes, please, Mayor Statham. My understanding this is going out to public expedition for twenty eight days. So we will have an opportunity to comment on this again. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Counselor Mahoney, write a reply.
Uh just briefly, uh I I I think this is probably, I I may suggest this is perhaps a non-standard bit of planning. In that it's got significant consequences. I I suggest that maybe the council consider giving a slightly longer exhibition time if that doesn't cause. Hold points for the next steps of action. Because I I I think there needs, obviously, there needs to be an information session for the councillors, so they can get their head around it. Um as well as as the community and the voluntary acquisition of property. Uh there's nothing that bothers people more than somebody buying their castle. And um so I think that needs a conversation with the community that isn't at arm's length. Uh yeah, so, yeah, so if I can put an amendment to that. The the amendment is that if we can extend the exhibition period, perhaps to put after forty two days, maybe give a couple of.
Second that.
Forty two weeks and that we uh provide a.
So forty two days.
Sorry, Mayor Staven. Um it'd be a very long and tedious conversation, but.
It would be, indeed.
And if we could have be considered in the the material and the way we communicate this to people, because you may need to speak to people. Some of the solutions, and I was very fortunate that. A solution has been resolved for where I live for my downstream neighbours who are flooding on every event. I'm very thankful to the council staff for what was a very cost-effective resolution of that a few years ago. So some of the resolutions will be cheap, given the real estate pricing in Lithgow, acquisition of properties. Is not going to be a cheap option. And so there's quite consequential things that need to be dealt with. So if I can move that amendment and I'll I'll leave my comments of that, that we extend it out to forty two days. And that we uh develop a a um a communication plan around this, please.
So Counselor Mahoney, you're including that in your the original motion. Counselor Goodsell, will you accept that? Will you accept that uh your. Are the forty two days? Yes, okay with you? All right, I'll just put that instead of debating that. If every councillor, is there any councillor against that? All right, I'll put the motion then. All those in favour say yes for the amendment. Uh now we come back to the motion. Counselor Mahoney, you're happy for me to put that again so that we see. Put the motion, all those in favour, thank you. Unanimous, thank you. That's carried, thank you. Ten point two, Infrastructure Services Report, Glen Davis Road Bridge Replacement Update. Could I have a mover, please?
Happy to move. Happy to second.
Counselor Goodsell and Counselor Bryce. Counselor Goodsell, would you like to speak to that?
Um yes, Mayor, good news story. Um it it's been identified with these bridges that there's been a number of variations. They've picked them up, um obviously in- increased their stability and. The structures overall and still within allocated funding, so good job.
Thank you, Counselor Goodsell. Counselor Bryce?
Um nothing to add to Counselor Goodsell's report.
Anybody else wishing to speak to that? Any any more dissent? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Ten point two point two, rural road rehabilitation rehabilitation tender. Have somebody move this, please, Counselor Mahoney?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Counselor Bryce. Counselor Mahoney?
Uh just some brief comments. Uh again, very thankful that this uh programme's rolling out. I note there was a uh a closed R F T and then it was opened. Um I thank the staff for that second stage, which has allowed local contractors uh to be. Uh more present in the in the repair works. I think that's a great outcome. Uh that that we're driving that not only the road sealing outcome, but. Uh driving that that programme through our our local earth-moving uh contractors. So there's obviously Gracie's Dukes and Peter's Earth Moving. So that's, I think, a a great social outcome as well as a um the outcome for our road sealing programme. So I thank the staff for the um management of that and obviously this is a big ticket issue. I was coming in through the back road through Mountain Falls and Tarrana, and we're starting to see asphalt. Seals there, which is great. And I I'm seeing the improvements out in the landscape, so despite all the challenges. We're we're starting to see the the asphalt hitting the road, maybe then the rubber hitting the road. So so I really appreciate the work that's going on there.
Thank you, Counselor Mahoney. Counselor Bryce?
Yeah, it's um to further to um Counselor Mahoney's comments. It is great to see that these roads around the whole of the L G A are going to be addressed, not just the. Around the whole of the L G A are going to be addressed, not just the main roads, but all the adjacent roads as well. The community, I've had quite a bit of um contact about these roads and it's good to see that this is going to be happening. And we're using contractors um that are local as well.
Thank you, Council Bryce. Anyone else wishing to speak to this? I'm not sure who would, Council Goodwin?
I just have a couple of questions, um. Sorry, just a couple of questions. Um how long are the works expected to take on another big ticket items? Um.
Mister Edgcombe?
Ultimately, it depends on the scope of the project. So we've developed this tender specifically so that um. It's reflexive based on what uh damage we find on site. Each area is going to have invasive geotechnical borehole testing completed to determine what the cause of the damage is, whether it's. Superficial seals or whether it's underlying uh pavement, mass pavement failure, so. It, it, it's, how long's a bit of string. Um I'm expecting these to continue for at least six months. Noting the scale of them, but some might finish quicker, some might take a little bit longer. So we'll keep the community. One of the key aspects of this project will be the development of a web portal. So the community can keep track of where all of these contractors are, how they're progressing and, you know, how long it might take them to reach their house, for example.
Thank you, Mister Edgcombe.
I only asked that question in the, in the commentary on page uh thirty. Says council will be commencing the process of tendering for the reconstruction and repair of damaged assets within the urban town centres of Lithgow, Wang and Portland. Um uh but that won't be considered until after these works are done due to the uh amount of um.
Yes.
Uh amount of um, what do you call it? Um sta- yeah, staff and, and uh machinery that are going to be used.
Mister Edgcombe?
It's an important point you make, um and I'd like to speak to that a little bit. The council does have limited capacity to deliver these works. Uh we already have a few contractors engaged and these will be additional, so we need to make sure. That the money flowing out the door as a result of these projects, given the council has to upfront this cash, uh doesn't exceed our capacity to pay. Um so we can't, we need to make sure that all of our libraries continue to be serviced, all of our roads, you know. Maintenance can still continue in areas that aren't mentioned by this report. And all those other various valuable services that ca- the council delivers can be continued while we deliver these projects, so. We have had to phase this necessarily, um so that we aren't um, you know, overburdening the council in terms of its disaster recovery.
Thank you, Council Goodwin and Mister Edgcombe. Anyone else? Council Goodsell?
Yes, I think it's very um, very clever to have multiple contractors to speed up the rectification of these rural roads and a cou- couple of. Contractors taking a really long time to complete. And just to note that all those funds are recovered back through Resilience New South Wales as well.
Thank you, Council Goodsell. Council Coleman?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Statham. I'm really pleased to see that Brown Gap Road is mentioned in the report. I know the residents down there are. Itching to get that road fixed as soon as possible. Um. Oh, sorry.
That's a separate project, Council Coleman.
It's, it's in.
It's not in the recommendation.
It's not part of the recommendation.
Just, just for clarity there, I think the, the, the closure you're referencing refers to the overlying geotechnical hazard?
Right.
That's not part of this tender. That's going to be separate work that's completed adjacent to the.
That's still a good thing, Mister Edgcombe. Five star. Um I do have a question now that I've been corrected. Um. Policy implications. In procuring this work through L G P and open tender, council's procurement policies and local government act. Have been followed was, so does that mean the local procurement policy was followed? Cause I'm very passionate about ensuring that locals get the work first.
Uh through you, Mayor Statham .
Gurney, thank you.
Uh through you, Mayor Statham. Yes, the, um in, in having the open tender. It, it did open it up for local procurement and the. Local procurement policy was taken into account and utilised where there's concessions for, for local tenders.
Thank you, Council Coleman and Mister Gurney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Write a reply, Council Maney?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Ten point three, Water and Wastewater Reports, Clarence to Alerewang Feasibility Study and Design. Could have somebody move this, thank you. Thank you, Council O'Connor. Council Bryce ? No, Council Goodsell? Council Goodsell? Council O'Connor?
Uh, yes, thanks, Mayor. I think this is one of the most important projects. That ever happened in Lithgow, because it will ensure water supply for Lithgow forever, virtual.
Thank you, Council O'Connor.
To me is, it's by far the most important project that's going on. Thank you, that's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Council Goodsell?
I agree with Councilor O'Connor. And although we understand what's going to happen, I don't know that the community understand the complexity around this. And if I could ask through you, Mayor, to our um Waterways Water Manager. Just to explain to the community what the Clarence to Alerewang Pipeline will do in assisting us. To secure our water um into the future and. And anything around that to do with Fish River Scheme and Okeem Park Treatment Plant.
Thank you, Council Goodsell. Mister Trapp, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Statham, through you, um. So the Clarence to Wang Pipeline and the overall water scheme is aimed at delivering water security for. Their services now and into the future. So it forms part of your overall strategy for delivering water services into the future. That includes growth and population increases, industry change and increases. And other commercial opportunities. The scheme in itself and the pipeline um would utilise a. Essentially an aquifer. In the Clarence area for us to deliver water through to a new, or our existing treatment plant as one stop. And then to a new treatment plant later down the line once our existing Okeem Park plant. Can no longer produce um peak day demand. So currently we run on Okeem Park. Which is the council line system that runs all the Lithgow area and the city under usual circumstances. And using Farmers Creek Dam. We also use the Wall, New South Wales Fish River System. Both those systems are quite old. They've got their issues with supply and um with treatment capabilities. Being able to grow either of those systems is quite difficult in retrofitting or. Renovating, growing either of those treatment facilities. Um and being able to get. The quantity of water down to either of those facilities is quite difficult. We've seen that in. The last drought where Oberon Dam dropped to four percent. Where Fish River wasn't able to produce enough water for the Lithgow area as well as its other customers like Energy Australia. Oberon Council and its other minor customers. So this project. And I'm probably a little bit passionate about this because it's been about three years of work of compress into a couple of minutes. Um. It's a, a massive body of work trying to secure our water supply for the region and remove these older. Um problematic supply systems that we have. And ensure we can cater for growth, cater for um good supply, good servicing. And meeting our drinking water guidelines and overall drinking water management requirements.
Thank you for that update, Mister Trapp. Excellent. You happy with that, Council Goodsell? Terrific. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council Maney?
Just briefly, uh just to pick up on what Mister Trapp was just talking to. We had a drought period where our water supply was severely threatened coming out of a stream-based system in the Fish River. So as we look at our, look after our recharge areas in the News Plateau, um we can draw on that groundwater-based. Um water supply which obviously gives us greater water security and I agree with Council O'Connor about the significance and importance of this. Um that, and it's a, a great project, so I, I wish you well in the implementation stage when we get there.
Thank you, Council Maney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council O'Connor, write a reply. Oh, Council Bryce, thank you.
Yeah, this is a great project, as everyone else has spoken on. The fact that we will, will be retiring Waterworks Dam, is that what it's called? Yep, but Farmers Creek Dam, which is an aging and um. Quite um significant uh issue if, if, if that actually goes. So it'd be good to see all that infrastructure gone and brand new, much more modernised and much safer for the whole community of infrastructure.
Thank you, Council Bryce. Anyone else wishing to speak? Uh write a reply, Council O'Connor?
I'm good, thanks, Mayor.
I'll put the motion, all those in favour say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Ten point four, Finance and Assets Report, Adoption of Plan Management, Part of Tony Lucetti's Sports Ground and Showground.
Happy to move.
Wait a second.
I do have some questions.
Council Goodsell, uh sorry, Council Coleman?
Thanks, Mayor Statham. Look, yep, I fully support the women's shed. I think this is a great facility once it's up. However, I am concerned about the Lithgow show and I understand that they've made representation. The concern I have, if we can get a question answered, is the Lithgow show may benefit from hiring. The new multipurpose facility during its annual event. It states that on page thirty three in regards to their concerns. Do they actually have to hire the event, hire the, the multipurpose facility once it's built? Is that what that says? Or if it's actually community structure, would that not? Be given to them in kind? How does that work?
Mister Gurney, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Statham. Generally, councils' facilities such as halls and other buildings, we, we do charge a, a fee for, for that. Uh we haven't, obviously this is a building yet to be constructed, so we haven't considered fees at, at all, but. Generally speaking, for council facilities, there's a, a community hire fee that's a significant discount to a commercial rate. Um a- as well, the show society does um receive financial assistance usually from council each year too.
Thank you, Mister Gurney. Thank you, Council Coleman. Council Goodsell?
I don't believe I've seen a pl- plan of management come this quickly back to council after being sent off for approval to a minister. So congratulations to the staff, however that happened, it, it did happen, so. Again, how's the timeline um through you, Mayor, to probably Mister Gurney? The timeline for the women's shed and, and having their funding um taken. Back from them until the project's complete, what's that looking like?
Mister Gurney, thank you.
Through you, Mayor Statham. I haven't personally had any dealings with the Women's Shed over their plans. But once if this is uh adopted by council tonight, they can move forward. Um with, with the next stage of planning the construction because this was a, a major part of the timeline. Didn't it have to be?
I can add to that, um I'm aware that um that Council's Director for Community Development, Michael McGrar, is working closely with. The um Women's um Shed and uh ensuring um that we lend every support. I think there was some uh concern about uh the uh time period for the funding lapsing. Um but we'll certainly be making representations uh to encourage that not be the case.
Thank you, Mister General Manager, Mister Gurney. Council Goodwin?
Mayor Statham, I'm, just in reading the documents, I didn't see anywhere in relation to this, um. Uh about uh camping and caravanning sites that may be able to be included in this precinct um at all. Is there, is there a scope for that in the future? And are we able to uh, to look at that? At some point in time? That would bring significant funding to Lithgow and.
Mister General Manager, thank you, Council Goodwin.
Uh through you, Mayor Statham. The, the plan of management is, is only for part of. The, a small part of the showground, sports ground, so it's rather specific in an effort to, to have this passed through quickly. Um this plan of management. There, there is work underway to obtain quotes for a generic. Plan of management that will cover the plan of management requirements. So I'll just make a note of that, of your um question. And I'll bring that to the attention of the Property and Legal Services Officer.
It might be down the track that we might be able to have a um, an information session where we can all get together and, or a working committee where we can. Get together and talk about that entire precinct as a, as a council, where we would like it to go.
Good idea, Council Goodwin. Anyone else wishing to speak? Council Maney?
Um firstly, just congratulations to the Women's Shed. Obviously, they've done well to get the funding and, and we've got into. Uh the production of a part plan of management obviously expedites things, which is great. Thank you, Ross Gurney. Um obviously, this gives a, a small amount of time for user groups to respond to the partial plan of management. Now, there are, uh, Council, uh Coleman's raised one element. Um the other one that was raised at both sports advisory committee was around the use of the area for car parking. Particularly for, for team-based sports, where you get large volumes of cars in there. I, I believe we can strike a balance there, but I would perhaps look at. Um when we do go forward, that rather than considering whether we need to do a parking study, I think we need to do a parking study. So in order to not create unnecessary conflict between different user groups. I, I, I think we can um achieve this, but I, it has to be a considered and deliberate action. Cause it will shift yield of car parking spaces in that location. I think there are other opportunities and obviously there's greater expertise than me. Uh in designing car parking shapes in that location, so. Um so I tend to agree with. Uh some of Councilor Goodwin's sort of vision that we need to look at the whole precinct and the opportunities the whole precinct presents. And that, and that will come in time as the, the full plan of management, but I'm happy to support what's going forward with. A parking study attached to it to ensure that we don't end up with a situation that it. We will lose excessive amounts of parking to other sport, sporting groups.
Thank you, Council Maney. Anybody else wishing to speak? Council Bryce?
Um, I concur with Council Maney's assessment about the park and we. Uh every sporting advisory committee meeting, this is, this issue has been brought up about the pa- um parking around at the showground. With the women's shed buil- being built there. So hopefully in the generic master plan for the area. That we can actually address some of this parking issues that these sporting um bodies are um, have um brought up.
Thank you, Council Bryce. Anyone else wishing to speak? Uh Council Coleman, write a reply?
Um I would like to change the motion. I'd like that the council adopt the plan of management for part Crown Reserve. Towny, you know, that first, that first as number one and, and a point two, that a parking study be completed by council. To ensure that going for- forward adequate parking is available. I think that covers everything that's been said.
Council Goodsell, would you uh accept that? Thank you. A parking study? Council Coleman, would you like to repeat that again? Thank you. Council Coleman will repeat that. Council Coleman moved the motion?
I moved the motion. I'm, I'm adding a point two. After the, listening to the ba- debate, I think it's important. That we have another po- a point two that states that a parking study be taken. Well, I mean, is conducted, whatever you want to put, um to ensure that. That adequate parking is available in that area. I don't know if that's the best way to word it.
Mister General Manager will clarify just the exact wording of that .
Sort of might clarify, are you referring to a parting, parking study being a feature of the plan of management for the overall precinct?
The overall precinct, yeah .
Supporting this current.
I'm supporting this .
Plan of management .
Supporting this, support, yeah, I'm supporting this, but I think that we need to do a parking study as mentioned in the debate . For the broader plan, yeah.
Council Goodsell, are you quite happy to accept that?
So are we still going to have that exact recommendation or is the parking going to be considered?
No, the parking is point two. So the, the recommendation remains the same, all right? Uh I'll put that to vote then. All those in favour say yes? Aye, yes, thank you. Uh carried, thank you. Ten point four point two, Provision of Photocopy and Printing Services. Can I have somebody move this, thank you?
I'll move it. Happy to second.
Thank you, Council Bryce and Council Goodsell. Council Bryce?
There's nothing to be said, it's just the purchasing of a photocopier, no worries .
Council Goodsell? Anybody is wishing to speak to this? Councillor Goodwin?
Just the procurement of the um the the businesses. It's, I can see it's not in our local areas. Are there any local areas that put in for it? And with the servicing um of the this uh item, the servicing doesn't appear to be local either. Uh if something happens to this machine, it looks like we're gonna have to come from another area. To service the machine is, have we sorted that as well? It doesn't hit any of the points in the uh the tenders.
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'll have to take that question on notice. I'll provide a response as quickly as possible.
It just appears if something happens.
Sorry, I'm just receiving the answer immediately. Through you, Madam Mayor. So the turnaround is, uh there's twenty-four hours. Acknowledgement within twenty-four hours and service within three days. So there's service terms in the contract, of course.
Yeah, okay.
Mr Gurney?
I just just make a quick comment, just to pull up on councillor Goodwin's.
Yeah, and Mr Reed, thank you. And um Trinity. I know Trinity is something as well as that. Uh thank you, councillor Goodwin.
Just a quick comment and I I support where you were going there, councillor Goodwin. Um I suppose in the second hierarchy of trying to use local procurement is to use regional. So my understanding it's a a firm coming out of Orange. So at least we're doing our best to keep uh that expenditure in the region where we can.
Thank you, councillor Marney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Councillor Bryce? Write a reply or put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Proposed licence agreements for the use of part Willerham Memorial Hall, ten point four point three, page forty-one. Have somebody move this, please? Councillor Marney, have a second to thank you. Councillor Goodsell? Councillor Marney? Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Anybody, any dissent on this? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Carried, thank you. Ten point four point four, quarter to budget review. Can I have somebody move this, please? Councillor Good. Councillor Goodsell?
I'll second it.
Councillor Bryce, councillor Goodsell, would you like to speak to that?
Um just to acknowledge that any assert list that's sitting there um is grant funding, which can sit for with us for a while before it goes back out. And I think it's again just demonstrating that council are managing um everything correctly, responsibly during this time.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Bryce? Anyone else wishing to speak? If there's no dissent, I'll.
Well, we're gonna make a brief point. Uh we still carry seven hundred and seventeen thousand depreciation expense for the R F S fleet. Um that continues to be something we need to look at over time. But again, I thank you, Mr Gurney, for your very detailed reports as always. Um thank you.
Thank you, councillor Marney. Anyone else wishing to speak? Reply, councillor Good. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Unanimous, thank you. Ten point four point five, investment report, January two thousand and twenty-three. Have a mover for that, thank you.
I'll move it.
Have a second to thank you, councillor Goodwin. Councillor Bryce, would you like to speak to that?
No, just to um just a recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Goodwin. Anyone else wishing to speak? I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Everybody? I can't see everyone. All those in favour say aye. It's not unanimous. Ca- uh councillor Lesley did it at the last minute, so unanimous, thank you. Council committee reports. Eleven point one, women's advisory committee minutes, the second of August two thousand and twenty-two and the twenty-fourth of January two thousand and twenty-three. Have somebody move this?
I'll move this. Happy to second.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Bryce? Uh councillor Bryce?
Just the recommendation that we endorse the minutes.
Thank you, councillor Goodsell. All right. Anybody else wishing to speak?
I wish to speak. I'm going to vote against these minutes.
Councillor Coleman?
I am voting against these minutes, not because I wish to, but I feel as though I have to stand with the women's advisory committee, which comprises of highly intelligent, experienced, educated and capable women. When I cha- chaired these me- meetings in the last term of council, I respected the knowledge that these women who brought to the committee, and they did it voluntary. I trusted that each of these women would contribute to council in their own way. And they volunteered their time. The women on this committee wanted to work with council to host an event on International Women's Day. The general manager called me and asked regarding this event, he had concerns. However, I felt that it could go ahead. I trusted the women on the committee and the staff allocated to the project to make it successful. But however, it's been cancelled. Numerous of the women are not impressed, to say the very least. They are are so angry about the fact that it's been cancelled. But instead of getting angry and using that energy for anger, they've now come together, created the Lithgow Women's Engagement Group. And they've also united, they're sharing their individual talents, they've been able to secure funding and are hosting a celebration at Secret Creek. Six to eight P M is when it will be held. Guest speakers and entertainment will be provided on Wednesday, the eighth of March. I personally am donating my honorary fee for this month towards the function to ensure it goes ahead. So I guess if you can't go through, then you go around. It's a bit like a pothole.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Would the general manager like to make comment on that before the discussion starts, please?
Um yeah, I think yeah, I think it is important um for those in the gallery and viewing uh to put on the public record that uh council was extremely disappointed um to have to um uh make a decision to not proceed with the event, which was done after consultation with the women's advisory group. There was a meeting of that group convened uh within the last week or so. Unfortunately, it was poorly attended. Um but there were some doubts about the state of readiness of the event, recognizing it's on the eighth of March. Um at that point in time, only six tickets had been sold. Arrangements still had to make, quotations had to be received for catering. Entertainment had not been organised nor speakers. And so there, you have the the objective, as I understand it, the advisory committee was to run a successful and an inclusive event that reached uh deeply across our community. Um council staff, um in light of there not being many people uh at in attendance at the committee, canvassed uh by email all of the committee members uh in the days thereafter to seek their view. And I think it's fair to say there were mixed views. Uh some supported proceeding, uh some uh saw the logic of of not proceeding um because there was some doubt as to whether it was going to be a successful event. After consultation with the mayor, as we were up in Forbes for the Central New South Wales Joint Organisation, reluctantly uh the decision was taken not to cancel the meeting, uh sorry, the event, but uh to defer it and reschedule it and make arrangements uh for an appropriate recognition uh of women uh with a a successful event uh in the near future. And we'll be bringing uh the committee back together as soon as possible um to start to work on that event. I think the final point was, we're very pleased that um uh that there's this other event that's being organised. Um but there that makes four events uh within the city. Uh um so there'll be an event at Hartley on the morning, there'll be an event at the bowling club at the lunchtime. There'll be an an event the evening before and then the event that councillor Coleman's just spoken about. Um so uh I'm really pleased uh with the level of uh participation. Um but reluctantly, this had to be cancelled because um we weren't assured that uh that it could be a successful event in light of those um only six tickets being sold.
Uh I would like just to add to the general comment. I realise it's not appropriate for the mayor to do this, but the main thing that we have to remember at all times, there are terms of reference. And the terms of reference were that you have to have a quorum. The last meeting, there was no quorum. The previous meeting, the minutes were incorrect. Councillor Coleman realises that. So did every other person attending the meeting last week that was there, but wasn't that wasn't able to get the quorum. So you cannot run a function on minutes that were incorrect. In fact, there was probably six or eight differentiations of correctness. And I could not tolerate that. It's not transparent, it's not professional. And when there was no quorum and on those meetings, there's been several meetings last year, that the quorum, there was no quorum. And some of the people that wrote in that were on that list have not even attended a meeting. So I think the council, in its due diligence, had no choice but to postpone that meeting, that function. And I wish the people all the very best, and that sincerely. But as chair of that meeting, I could not allow the minutes that were incorrect and no quorum to go ahead when they hadn't put out tenders. We've got to be fair to every business house in this town. The proto- protocol was not followed at any point during that meeting, the quorum. So it's with great regret that I have to take that on notice too because I was so excited about it going ahead. So we'll move on. Is there any questions anybody would like to ask or somebody would like to speak to that? Thank you. Councillor Goodsell?
Wasn't sure who was organising what. Who was organising? It was a council staff.
Coun- Lithgow City Council evening for International Women's Day. We had uh a council um staff member had to go overseas unexpectedly because of a very uh sick person in her family. And uh we are not quite sure why the minutes were incorrect on several parts. I don't want to put the blame to anyone. Uh it was around Christmas time, everyone was busy. But the most important thing that we have to remember here, there was no quorum and the previous minutes were incorrect. So there was nothing that we could do about this at such late a notice. And as the general manager said, in a small, you know, we're not a city, uh to have four international women events is amazing. It's fantastic. So I hope they all do very well. Anybody else wishing to speak on this? Councillor Marney?
Um o- obviously not, I'm not in any way embedded in this committee.
I can understand why.
Reasonably obvious reasons, but um for me, like I know that International Women's Day is coming up every year. And I'm just unclear that we're not, you know, like it's a point in the landscape. So I am a little bit concerned about some of our committee function. Um so this is concerns me that one of the one of the key milestones in that committee didn't get delivered on. Now, I I'm not, I've got no visibility on who's, why it hasn't happened or not. And I don't want to go down that rabbit hole. But but these women give up their time, I get paid a fee and the staff get paid a fee. They turn up to these meetings. I've 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 sat in a meeting where, another committee meeting, where people are being ushered out almost from the minute they come in, like an unwanted guest at a a family function. I I hope that we're we're delivering the respect to these uh community members when they turn up for our advisory committees. Because they're they're getting off work early, they're making up time, they're attending. So I can't give a a clear view line on this, but it does concern me. And um so I know that councillor Leslie's brought forward concerns about committees as well. I think it might be useful for us in each of our committees to review how our committees are travelling. Um because I certainly value the people that turn up. And it's important that their input is it gets a return on their time. So so I'll leave it at that. I can't add any more to it though.
Thank you, councillor Marney. Anyone else wishing to speak on that? Um write a reply, councillor Bryce?
Yeah, I just want to point out that I've missed a couple of these meetings simply because I haven't had a meeting request in my calendar, which I use. The last meeting that was run last week, there was definitely no meeting agenda on our on our calendars, which is is hard to gauge what we're doing. I'm on seven committees plus a few outside, so I need to have that on the calendar. That was an issue for me. The fact that there was no quorum and we couldn't get addition decisions made was another one, that we were rushing decisions i- is another reason why I felt that it was, is, you know, we to delay it. The fact that we only had six tickets sold, which is really sad, considering, you know, we'd been planning this right from our first meeting. And it was brought up at the first meeting when it was going to be on. And then we didn't have a lot of, we didn't have regular meetings to try and get it worked out. But at the end of the day, the decision was made to cancel it due to the fact of all these issues that compounded. So hopefully for next year that we have a better systems and that the Women's Day, International Women's Day is better celebrated within the council.
Thank you, councillor Bryce. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Against councillor Marney, councillor Coleman, councillor Leslie against the other councillors. For, carried, thank you. Community Development Committee meeting minutes. Um can I have somebody?
I'll move those.
I'm second it, please.
Councillor Bryce?
This was a, um this meeting went pretty well. We didn't cancel anything. Um I'm happy that everyone that put in for funds, received funds as well. This was um, oh no, this is, this is not the last one, is it? No, no, this is, yeah, this is it. Um that's it.
Thank you, councillor Bryce. Councillor Coleman?
I'd like to thank the committee who supported a motion of condolences for Brian Williamson, who passed away on the tenth of December. He was a member of this community development committee for several years and contributed to a great deal of the committee's work. So I'd like to thank the committee for um supporting that condolence motion. That's all I'd wish to say on the matter.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Anybody else wish to speak? No dissent. I'll put the minute, put the motion, please. All those in favour say aye. Or once again, all those in favour say aye. Councillor Leslie against, thank you. I will if you like. All those in favour say, no, I'm not. It's not necessary for committee meetings. Eleven point three, page fifty-six, TALP committee meeting minutes. Can I have somebody move this, please?
I'm ha- I'm happy to move that.
Thank you, councillor Leslie. Have a second to thank you. Councillor Goodsell?
But I also make a comment that uh we we also, it's it's part of the recommendation here, but we did pass a a a notice, a thank you to Michelle McGrath, who's who's represented the 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 bus line company in in Lithgow for for many years on on the committee as as uh the state member's representative. Uh she's no longer going to 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 be on on the committee, but we we thought her 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 support uh over many years, you know, should should be noted. And I'd like to make formally do so here at this uh council meeting.
Thank you, councillor Leslie. That's very uh accepted by all of us. Thank you. Uh councillor Goodsell? Anybody else wishing to speak, anything? Councillor McGee?
Yes, the the um, did any of this go out for public comment, like the Woggin Willie Wall Street sign? Moving, the stopping zone?
Uh Mr Edchcombe?
I'd have to take that on notice, sorry. I'm not aware of a public consultation process uh or the need to, sorry, but I can get a note to the councillors first thing in the morning.
I will uh point out that this particular request uh in Woggin Street, Willie Wire Road, was actually a- asked by the the police. The police themselves brought this to the council and to the committee uh and.
Through you, Mayor Statham, it's it's they're generally, uh it's a consideration of site distance and application with the relevant standards included in Austro, so typically it's just a compliance issue, not so much a a matter of public consultation.
Councillor McGee, this has been something that's been urgently needed for probably fifteen years. Uh was there any other questions, councillor McGee? No? Uh anybody wishing to speak on this? Write a reply, councillor Leslie. I'll put the motion. All those in favour say aye. Hands up. Councillor Marney? Unanimous, thank you. Eleven point four, operations committee meeting. Eleven point four, operations committee meeting minutes, the second of February. Can I have somebody?
Happy to second.
Now who moved that, please, councillor Goodsell? Councillor Goodsell, would you like to speak to that? Councillor Bryce, is there anyone wishing to speak to any?
I have an amendment.
Councillor Lesley, amendment, thank you.
Uh I'd like to uh amend point two uh of the recommendation to read. That uh. That meetings be held once every month.
Can I get a second for that, thank you? Have you a second? Can, thanks to councillor Coleman?
Yeah, if I could speak to it.
Yes, certainly.
Operations committee um. Meetings deal with our core responsibilities, the roads, drains. Uh it's uh we need to to do that. I understand that one of the reasons that we want it every two months is that reports are are difficult to write and hard to write, but. Let's 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 be blunt, re- reports are not a notable feature of this council. For example, twelve thousand litres of concentrated caustic soda warranted a verbal report, verbal report.
Keep on track, please, councillor Lesley.
I'm I'm talking about the minutes and and the reasons for the recommendation. To have these meetings me dealt with uh on on two months, core responsibilities. But. You know, reports need to be written, I don't think they have to be overwritten. I mean, obviously, that particular case, a verbal report, was never followed up with a report, which it should have been. At a at a subsequent meeting, so and 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 the council were not duly notified of that matter for six months. You know, hidden and 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 kept secret from the community.
Can we stay on track, please?
Please stay on track, thank you, councillor Bryce.
Gosh, thank you, councillor.
Where is councillor Les?
You're you're so helpful.
I am.
Absolutely, thank you, councillor Coleman.
I'm just surprised I wasn't shouted at. Have some respect across the room, that's the that's the normal.
Can you stay on track?
Uh point of order, we haven't entered into open forum unless I miss the mayor asking to do it, so. Whether people find councillor Lesley annoying or not, or irrelevant. I don't think the interjections are helpful, um so.
Councillor Mani, you're calling a point of order, you can't just dictate to the.
No, I'm I'm happy to call a point of order.
Thank you, and I accept that point of order. Uh I did read the oath out today for the first time. And I think we need to heed the oath, so councillor Lesley, refrain from making derogatory marks, but also, excuse me, I'm speaking. That's very rude to do that, councillor Lesley. Is it because I'm a fe- female that you made those actions then?
Uh no, that's certainly not the case.
Thank you. Uh you will be allowed to speak, you are, you have moved this and you have an amendment. So we've got the amendment, the amendment you're wanting to do is to come back to monthly meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
Correct, right, and councillor Coleman? Uh councillor Coleman has seconded that amendment, is that correct? Thank you, councillor Coleman, would you like to speak to that, councillor?
I'm happy not to speak to it.
Thank you. Um councillor Lesley, would you like write a reply or councillor Mani, you're going to speak, say?
Briefly speak to it, um. I think there are issues with committee meeting frequency, I'm not sure whether I can support going to monthly, I think. Um I've actually found this committee meeting, uh committee. Process over the years to be quite fruitful. I think I can see a continuum of thinking, planning and action, which which I'm impressed with. Um I understand councillor Lesley's concerns about the volume of things that come forward in this area. Um I I have some concerns about other committees, about the the distance between them. Um but I'm I'm afraid I'm I'm given the nature of workload at the moment in the organisation, I'm. I'm unfortunately not going to support it, so.
Thank you, councillor Mani. Anybody else wishing to speak? Write a reply, councillor Lesley.
Uh I didn't move the motion.
You moved the amendment. I'll put the amendment, all those in favour of the amendment. Councillor Lesley and councillor Coleman. The amendment is lost. Those against? Councillors McGee, Mani, O'Connor, Bryce, Goodsell, Goodwin and Statham. The amendment is lost, we now go back to the motion. Uh councillor Goodsell. Not speaking, alright. Uh I'll put the uh put the recommendation, thank you, all those in favour, say aye. Unanimous, councillor Lesley, um not voting, thank you. Eleven point five, sports advisory committee meetings, the eighth of February two thousand and twenty three, could I have a mover, please?
I'll move it.
All second.
Thank you, councillor Bryce and councillor Goodwin. Councillor Goodwin, would you like to speak to, uh councillor Bryce, would you like to speak to that?
No.
Councillor Goodwin? I have been asked what night the date is for the uh Ridgecad Memorial Sports Star of the Year Awards. Do you have a date for that? Thank you. A parent rang me the other day to see when that was on, thank you. Uh anybody else wishing to speak to this? If there's no dissent, I'll put.
Hang on, may I have a question, sorry?
Yes, councillor Coleman?
Um in regards to the sports advisory committee, can anybody turn up from any sporting body or do they have to be invited?
No, they can turn up, I'll, I'm sure that's correct, is that, is it, it's not?
Uh through U M S, Statham, you have to be nominated to become a member of the committee, so there can be representatives brought forward. From each of the representative sporting organisations locally. Um you, other sporting groups could attend by invitation or by request. That's perfectly fine, but they wouldn't be voting members of the committee.
The reason I ask if I could, Mayor Statham, is that I'm not sure whether or not the the table tennis club of Lithgow is not. Part of this committee, but I don't know whether or not it should be. Is it more about sporting grounds than anything else?
No, any sporting groups more than invited to attend will uh offer an extension, uh uh and will will uh. Invite them to to um become a member of the committee, will write to them this week.
That'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman and Mister Edchcombe. Anybody else wishing to speak? I'll put the motion, all those in favour, say aye. Thank you, unanimous. Eleven point six, community development committee meeting minutes, the fourteenth of February.
Well, I'll move it, this.
Thank you, councillor Bryce and councillor Goodsell.
This is the, this is the one where everyone received whoever put in a submission for money.
Yes.
Everyone received it, uh so nobody missed out, it was a good meeting.
Thank you, councillor Bryce, councillor Goodsell. Anybody wishing to speak? Councillor Coleman?
Um I note in the commentary that a proposed opera event at the Union Theatre was to be held in. April twenty twenty three, but I believe that that's been delayed.
That is definitely. Uh it is the first weekend in November and from memory, I think it may be the fourth and the fifth of November. Which will allow the organisers um a timeframe suitable to do the work that has to be done. But you will be notified at the next co- at the next committee, councillor Coleman. Anybody else wishing to speak? If there's no dissent, I'll put the motion, all those in favour, say aye. Carried, thank you. Eleven point seven, page sixty one, finance committee meeting minutes of the fourteenth of February two thousand and twenty three.
I'll move this.
Thank you, councillor Bryce, have a second, thank you. Thank you, councillor Goodsell. Councillor Bryce?
Again, there was no quorum for this meeting, but um. Mister Gurney went through all with those who were attended, it was quite infor- um informative, thank you.
Councillor Goodsell, any debate, any councillor Lesley?
It is, it is standard procedure with minutes that you record those who attended. Yet I note this is, this didn't apply at this, for these minutes, could I have a reason why?
It wasn't a a meeting. We didn't have a meeting, it was a discussion.
Well, I think I think the meeting was called, but failed, as it says in the recommendation, for lack of a quorum. What I'm asking is why? Why are the minutes of the me- of the non-meeting uh not have the names of those who did attend recorded?
If there's not a meeting, I don't know whether that occurs, I'd have to ask the general manager that, councillor Lesley, cause I have no idea.
I I think it's a reasonable question, but this occupies another zone, it wasn't, it wa- we couldn't, it wasn't an official meeting. So therefore arguably all the code of meeting practice uh provisions don't apply. Um but uh just to honour uh and and share with the council what was presented to those uh those two people who did attend. Um we're bringing uh these notes forward.
Thank you, Mister General Manager. Councillor Bryce, write a reply. All those in favour, say aye. Carried, abstained, councillor Lesley. Close, uh bu- business of great urgency. No business of great urgency. I'd like somebody to move that we've been to close confidential council, thank you. Councillor Coleman? Thank you, councillor Bryce. All those in favour, say aye. Thank you, unanimous.
Item twelve point one, confidential mayoral minute, general manager's contract of employment. Renewal of appointment and performance review. Council resolved that the information regarding the general manager's performance review be noted. And point two, Mister Matthew Macarthur from Macarthur Recruitment Services. Assist council to conduct the general manager's upcoming performance review. And point three, following the general manager's written request, a four-year employment contract renewal. Be offered to Mister Butler up to May twenty twenty seven, as per clause five of the general manager's contract of employment.
I wish to call a division on that and and have my name recorded as having voted against this uh this motion.
Uh we have already done that, councillor Lesley.
In in public, I'd like to have my name recorded in in public for the video.
A a division was called, um councillors for the motion were councillors. Statham, Goodwin, Bryce, O'Connor. McGee, uh that was five and and four councillors against, councillors Goodsell, Mani, Coleman and Lesley.
Thank you everyone for attending tonight. Uh in future, I think it would be a very good idea. That if any councillors uh have questions. To ask, please go and see the staff, call the staff, as some of you councillors do, which is great. Because it's very difficult for the staff to come back into a meeting without any notice of what questions are going to be asked. So I think it would help the administration if there are any questions. You ask prior to the meeting instead of asking them at the meeting, unless it's something that's come up at the last minute. Thank you. The meeting's closed tonight at ten past ten. Ten fourteen, exactly, thank you for lis- thank you for the live stream viewers and thank you to the councillors and the staff, thank you.